Everybody, uh, today is Monday, January the thirteenth, twenty twenty five, and it's eight o'clock AM. And the county board of commissioners are meeting uh with department heads today on uh goal setting meetings. Good enough?
Thank you, Commissioner Barney. Um, this morning and tomorrow morning, we are gonna hear from a um all of the departments here at Cook County. We're gonna give you some mid-year um kind of updates on where they are as a department and kind of look forward to the rest of this fiscal year. And um into the next fiscal year. So this morning, we have the road department, health department, veterans, immunity development. Um, the internal service departments, uh IT library in the airport. Uh, tomorrow, we will cover the rest of the departments, uh both this afternoon and tomorrow afternoon. Um, we'll be meeting with um most of the department heads, you know, kind of one-on-one setting to take a deeper dive. Uh, into uh what is discussed here with the board, uh and start looking forward in more detail towards uh upcoming budget. So that's just kind of a quick overview of what the next uh couple of days look like. Later this week. Uh, we will get together to do some goal setting, um and set the priorities uh for the budget for the fiscal year twenty six. So we'll have those conversations after the mid-year presentations from the department. That's really all I have. Uh, as an introduction, Jamie, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Want to mention our guests, our guest members of the budget committee or your?
Yes, we have a, we have a couple of members from the budget committee. We have Steve and Scott um here with us uh this morning. I know that um. Bill Anderson is out of, out of the state, um but he will be, if he's interested, he can watch a recording of this video. We also have with us. Crystal Hughes, who's sitting over here, she's gonna help facilitate the goal-setting conversation um this week. And I think that's all I have for introduction, so uh I'm ready to kick it off if uh everybody else says.
Um, good morning, commissioners and chair and budget committee. I'm Brad Haynes, Cook County Road Department Superintendent. I'm here today to talk about our budget. We're setting up to be on track for our budget. We've got about forty-eight percent spent. Um, we still have uh received forty-one percent in our budget. We still have about half of our expenditures that are projected to receive yet to come in, so. Projects that were completed as planned this year is Reservoir Road and Willard Road. Uh, had a really low, has a really low PCI. There was a pit that was contributing to some of the damage on it, calling back and forth, uh big trucks and stuff up there on the twenty-seven road, so we had a. Quite a bit of damage to the road last spring, and we were spending a lot of time out there fixing potholes and stuff. So we did a lot of deep base repairs and over, over capped that with some uh asphalt, and then we uh double chip sealed the road to help preserve it. For the future flap grant that we've been processing through the process. Um, I'm applying for the flap gang again this year to get that road uh widened. And up to the new, new standards of new roads, so it's be a little bit wider with white lines, new signage and guard rails where applicable. It is eligible for the flap grant because it is, it does go to Primeville Reservoir. It is uh goes down to a recreation area. That's run by the Bureau of Reclamation, so it is eligible for a flap grant. And we're gonna drew from county line to Shute's County line to uh all the way to Highway twenty-seven is the, is the projected plan. Uh, we'll see what happens with the grant. There's a lot of uh people going for the grants also. So um this year, we're planning on doing a chip seal up Juniper Canyon all the way from three eighty to uh Boat Ramp Road. And then uh for Boat Ramp Road on into the resort area, uh we'll do crack seals. Uh, we'll probably do a double chip on the hill. That to uh Juniper Canyon due to the fact of the wear and um needing to have a little more somewhat structure to it, so. Um, materials only on this project will probably cost around five hundred and fifty K, and that's materials, and that's oil and rock, so. That'll be with the crush and then oil, depending on oil prices this year too. We haven't got a list of what the oil prices are gonna be, but. They're not gonna go down from what everybody says, so. Um, this will include Davis Loop. We did a leveling course on David, Upper Davis last year from uh Juniper Canyon to Caius. To kind of mitigate some potholes that were coming in there and road deficiencies, and we're gonna try to do. Uh, for the lower Davis, all the way to Upper Davis in a, in this chip seal, depending on the prices, so. Um, there's a plan to do a contracted um RFQ out for crack seal this year. Uh, we haven't cracked sealed in our group for quite a few years, and that's first line of defense for road maintenance is to get this crack sealed up. And so we're gonna, in and on budget, uh engineer's estimates about three hundred and fifty K, the four hundred K, so it's multiple miles of crack seal. Let's just see what the budget plays out. Uh, planning for uh twenty-five uh after July um to contract out Pocket Road. From um High Grass all the way to the end, south to the end, a little over two miles. Uh, do an RFK for that contractors to about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe less. We got a pretty good deal on Barnes last year. But we still have some warranty work that needs to be done on it, so. Um, then we'll do another in-house uh two inch uh, two plus miles of um. Then lift leveling course on Lone Pine Road, Butler Road out in the uh Lone Pine area. Uh, we're spending a lot of time out there doing pothole repairs and patching, so it's just time to put something on it and then get it on the chip seal list. And we'll be renting a paver to do that. Challenges, challenges impacting the course services this year. We are sitting at about one point two million for our budgeted maintenance, which is crack seal, which is chip seal and asphalt maintenance. Uh, we're deferring about almost four million dollars a year in maintenance on our roads due to the fact of budgetary constraints. This has caused it our, our PCI to plummet. Um, we are sitting at about seventy-nine PCI right now after the. Uh, capital assets inspections of last year, and in ten years, we'll be sitting at a sixty-eight if we keep within the same path we are of a one point two million dollar. And with the short falls, almost four million dollars every year, so. Um, I've been researching a lot of grant opportunities. There's a lot right now coming about. They're pretty short. Uh, we just missed, we're missing the one that uh. One point five billion dollars for a raise grant. We just don't have the uh projects in place right now. And it's mostly for bridge maintenance and stuff to get some of our bridges up to standards. Um, but uh, there's more grants out there, and I'm looking towards them. So we gotta get some uh. What the projects look like scoped out before we can go for the grants, because they're pretty entail with the, all of the uh environmental. Act statements and stuff like that, so it's not just applying for a grant. You have to have a basically a build form, so. There's several I'm looking for. I'm going um to meet with a consultant tomorrow to start that process, so. So we can get some monies and get some, some of these uh structures fixed. So any questions?
Who's your grant writer?
Don't have one at this time.
The, the county has a couple of grant writers under contract. Uh, I think um in this circumstance, Brad's also gonna look. Uh, outside of those, those two grant writers, find somebody with a little more special, specialized experience with these types of grants.
So basically on these grants, you kind of have to shovel-ready?
Yes, they, they are requiring up like a seventy percent build on them, so. The raise grant was uh twenty-five million was a cap on the raise grants. We'll go for it again as soon as it comes back around, because it's a super good grant. Well, we have to have shovel-ready projects to get them done, so at least a seventy percent build. And we do have a lot of bigger structure bridges that are in, needing some repairs.
Do you think with the administration change, do you think we're gonna see more transportation?
I hope so. I think, I think uh, I think with the administration, we will see more, but this is just trickling down from years of last, last uh administration.
Uh, basic question. I'm, I'm familiar with the acronym PCI. What's PCI stand for?
Movement Condition Index. It goes from one to, one to one hundred. If you're down to one, you're, it's an ultimate failure, so. Um, about sixty-nine or less, your roads are um. Getting to the point of catastrophic failure, alligatoring, uh deep base repairs and stuff like that, and you can't catch up on them. If you don't keep the maintenance on them, so the object is to keep it seventy-five or eighty, over eighty, so you don't have as much repair on your roads.
Thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Barney, I have one question, if that's okay for me to ask. It's for Jamie and Brad. Uh, on the first slide. Um, it shows that the road department's received forty percent of its expected revenue. Um, can you um? Can you kind of summarize how revenue comes in for the road department? Because we're obviously over fifty percent through the fiscal year at this point, so I'm just curious how the. Revenue is.
Jamie, would you help me with that, please?
The majority of the revenue we've received here to date is the gas tax revenue, so um. You know, money that hasn't yet moved into road department would be those SRS dollars from the road agency. Historically, we've been, we've been doing those later in the year. Once we, once you receive the funding for the, you know, then we pass it along to the road department. So that is a big chunk that hasn't yet been moved into this one. So it's just regular gas tax right now.
Can I ask the follow-up question to that? Is the gas tax in general in a declining phase due to?
Yes.
Yeah, so going forward, the expectation would be a drop-off in gas tax revenue to the county?
So when we trended it out, it was growing at about two point seven percent or expected to. There's been some years where it's been pretty high, some low, so two point seven percent is a pretty low growth assumption compared to prior. Uh, at this point, it's not a decline. It was not declining, but it's not growing as fast as our expenses.
Any other questions?
One overarching question for you. What are your top three priorities if you just had to school them up?
Up three of priorities is equipment, road maintenance dollars. And uh, equipment.
What, what about uh the second access to Juniper Canyon? I think that should be somewhere in that.
That's gonna be in the T A, TSP.
Yeah.
And it's not quite, I don't think it's quite finished yet, so that, that price on that was pretty, pretty extravagant price, so. Um, the maximum amount of so, a lot of these grants, like the raised grounds, twenty-five million dollars, it does work towards stuff like that, but. The maximum of it was twenty-five million, so that project would be way out of its scope. Some of the prices I saw at the last meeting.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's something we can get done right away, but I think it definitely needs to be I, I, pretty high on the priority list.
Yeah, and.
I know that that's a big priority for the people in our community, so nothing. I, I get it. It's, it's not gonna happen overnight, but we need to be looking at that and trying to find any way we can to make some.
Right, and we need to find some uh revenue generators to do that with, so we can put them, that type of projects in a savings account.
Be shovel-ready, Brad. Are, are there any limiting factors that? We can help with? Are, are, what, what does that look like?
Um. It, just be in the know on when the grants are coming around uh with their other constituents and stuff. Um. The shovel-ready portion of it's gonna be based, is gonna be the consultant team drawing up, uh getting the plans for the uh. Environmental impact statements and stuff like that, get ready and started, so that we have uh. His timelines are very, very stringent on all that stuff being ready when you do the grant package. Pretty entail.
Does any of it hinge on the TSP plan? More benefit to have it completed?
Uh, possibly would be helpful, so we had the bigger projects like the Juniper Canyon, the Powell Beach Roundabout on all the. Uh, access points on Powell Beach Highway or one, one twenty-six in that plan, so we could have that shovel-ready. Another thing too that I've been researching on these grants is there's zero contribution, contribute, contributions from us. They're a hundred percent funded grants. So that really takes the, you know, the three million dollars that we have to pay ten percent on, three thirty thousand dollars out of our, you know. Or three hundred thousand dollars out of our, out of our budget, which we don't have, so I'm looking for a hundred percent grants.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Just, just a quick follow-up to um Commissioner Crawford and Commissioner Barney's questions about being shovel-ready in Juniper Canyon specifically. So the, the TSP should be completed before the end of this fiscal year. Um, once the TSP is completed. Hopefully, we will have a preferred route identified for Juniper Canyon, and that will, as I understand, it will help us. I did um qualify for grants, not only for the construction work down the road, but also any necessary design work. I did, some of those probably are not gonna be a hundred percent funded, like some of what Brad is looking for, for um some of the projects he discussed this morning. But once we have that TSP finalized and a specific route identified as our preferred solution, um that should open up some doors. To uh get uh funding for the next, next necessary steps, including the design and ultimately construction of any project like that.
Give a follow-up to the top priority for equipment. Uh, that wasn't necessarily covered in all the maintenance priorities that are being, so what?
Our equipment is a aging fleet, and we can't get parts to them. A lot of them um. Parts for the, the general dump trucks and stuff for, in, for instance, are, you know, we can't get parts for them because they're so old. Uh, that's kind of the new norm nowadays, so it's hard for the shop to keep them up to, to, you know. Operating standards when they can't get parts to them, or the parts are slow to get coming. Um, and they are expensive.
Right, so for the equipment that's in your forecast right now, is there, are there replacements that are going to be needed that are? Even in addition to the ones we already kind of knew about, or are we still on track with what we've been forecasting?
Uh, we have added a couple of heavy commercial trucks in the, in the forecast to uh try to get replaced, so. We gotta start that process. Uh, we've had a, a spot where we couldn't get by any vehicles for about three years, and that's really hit us hard with our maintenance.
So generally speaking, my experience with LaSchwab, we went from a purchase program to a lease program on all of our. Trucks. Does it, I don't know if that applies to dump trucks specifically, because the hardware is obviously different, right? With the, with the uh dump assemblies on these trucks, but is there lease options for uh dump trucks where you swap the beds on them?
We have looked into that. Uh, it was, it was mentioned, and we were uh, it was recommended that we just purchase outright. Versus lease, and the cost, uh cost of doing business was more to lease them.
And was that why you were still having the same issues with getting parts for the existing equipment?
What's that now?
You were expressing a concern with being able to get uh replacement parts for your existing equipment. When you assess doing a lease program, were you in the same situation with the older equipment not being able to uh find parts?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the lease program um does have a cost to the end of it, so, and our trucks are very specific, specifically built with extended frames. Live hydraulics, so they're not something that's gonna turn back to the fleet and be operational to another, other. Another agency could purchase them or lease them, but it's not gonna be something that goes out on the street.
Thank you.
You good?
Good.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Is everybody mic Camille?
Yeah, hi, Camille, our deputy director. We have this fan over here, so you might have to talk just a little bit.
Perfect. Morning, everyone. Um, I'm gonna be going over the Health and Human Services Department uh mid-year application. As you can see on the first slide, um we have spent fifty-five percent of what we expected to receive for this year. Um, we had rollover funds, so four funds that um we didn't expect to receive this year, but. Were in addition to our funds, so that's why our spend is higher than what we received. Um, we're at forty, forty-six percent spent. Um, theoretically, it would seem that. Most of our spending kind of happens in the second mid-quarter for at least a lot of our prevention and promotion teams, which have the larger budgets. For getting contracts out the door. Um, we're doing events in more of the spring and early um summer. Completed as planned, um we contracted the Reed Group to help us develop our strategic plan. And that is something that they gave back with August thirtieth, and something that we are currently in the process of reviewing and teaching. Many of the things that are in this presentation come from our strategic plan, which is what we plan to complete in the next four years. Uh, we did complete a successful rollout of non-standard work schedules for staff. We didn't start that until January first. Um, so that was kind of a big deal, and we've been continuing to implement and reevaluate that process. We had a Crook County Youth Summit at the fairgrounds um for youth to get more involved in health-related. Education, mental health, behavioral health, um in a fun day. And then we, over the past year, we developed a department committee. To promote wellness, increase employee satisfaction and retention. We call it Ecert. It was in relation to a employee retention survey that we did. Um, based on some feedback that we see, we, we received from staff members. And that is continuing to be implemented, and that group meets um about every other week. Uh, many of our staff are participated in the Regional Health Improvement Plan conducted by the Central Oregon Health Council. Um, in outlining plans for the future for the community. Triennial Review Completion, that's a big project that um happens every two years. And um we're still wrapping up a few of our triennial reviews, just because they need um some additional documentation. And then we have a lot of state program reporting that is currently in the process and is constantly being updated. Uh, currently, we're working on um piloting a performance management system. Um, we have a variety of different programs. The program has different work plans and requirements, and it's hard to assess. How we can help our staff members succeed in their roles and actually meet the specific needs of their roles if we don't have this. We have been updating the Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Response Plans, included All-Hazard Emergency Response, Mass Care. Special Pathogens Plan, also updating local and regional health equity plan. And then we have contracted with Jason Carr to complete some of our communications work. Um, just because we don't have the capacity to do that ourselves. Beginning before Jan, June thirtieth, we'd like to continue um processes. For staff wellness and retention. Um, some of the things that we'd like to incorporate into that is setting clear performance expectations. And indicators for each position, start developing comprehensive performance management system. Develop sustainable employee recognition and wellness programs, and this would be in addition to what the county has already done for um years of service. And then department community engagement. We're always looking for new ways to engage with the community. So we'd like to start the process to standardize external communication policies and procedures. Identify at least three new partners to support Kirk County Health and Human Services in reaching priority populations by June twenty-six. And then start identifying and attending at least three new community meetings planned or events. Planning for after June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we're gonna continue the process of staff wellness and retention. Um, hopefully complete our comprehensive, comprehensive um performance management system. Start the process to establish an ongoing evaluation process and supports for workload management. That's a huge um burden that a lot of our staff are. Have expressed. Department funding, uh we'd like to identify and secure at least one new source of funding by June twenty twenty-seven. Uh, we set this bar kind of low. Ideally, the funding is more substantial than just um a few thousand. Um, and then department community engagement. Um, we'd like to establish um actual communications person within our department. Um. I'll just leave it at that, and then continue to standardize external communication policies and procedures. Secure at least three new partners to support Cook County Health and Human Services in reaching priority populations, specifically the Hispanic, Latino. Latinx communities, and then um we already mentioned this in our last slide, but at least three new um. Community events, continuing to work towards that. Some of the challenges impacting our core services, um recruitment and staff retention. Um, are directly related to our sustainability. Um, we have quite a few vacancies. Which. Um, which then contributes to other staff members taking on more work when those positions are vacant. Um, funding limitation, so sometimes we're not actually able to hire another person because we can't fund them. Um, because maybe the position was already filled. Administrative burdens from the state, um we're asked to complete a report, and sometimes um multiple report, multiple reports following that. That is kind of um repetitive. Um, and then it, lack of HR systems, um. This kind of goes back to us having to come up with our own performance management system, because we don't have one built in the county. And then financial limitations, complications, lack of processes and systems. Um. We don't know exactly where we are on our budgets until we have kind of completed that order. Um, if, or like a month, it'd be nice to have a live view of where we're at, so we know how we can spend. Um, and hopefully we, that would result in us not having to give money back to the state. We have a few uh potential staffing requests and changes. Our nurse practitioner has resigned. Her last day is uh January thirtieth. Um, that's a difficult position to hire based on how much we pay them. Um, the position isn't posted yet, but we have intentions to post and get applicants for that position. Um, if we can't, then we are prepared to reassess what the program needs. We received some additional funding that would help support a community health worker. Uh, I'm not sure if this would be a budget amendment or request, but we would like to add an additional community health worker, which would help with our family. Services team, and then also be connected with our prevention and promotion team. Our family health services nurse, we have a supervisor position that has been vacant for over a year now. Um, and we'd like to hire for that position as well as potentially have a ner, another nurse to support. Um, the full-time work. And the last one is a success coordinator to monitor and support a variety of programs and performance management for the department. This position could incorporate kind of the communications that we're trying to have within our department, as well as performance management. That we hope to create and implement within our department.
Uh, one quick question.
Yeah.
You, you mentioned performance management several times throughout your, your presentation.
Yeah.
And when you first brought it up, I was gonna ask if you had a tool for performance management, but as you continued your presentation. It sounds like you don't have a tool and you want to develop an in-house performance management program? Is that accurate?
Yes, uh, we don't have a tool. I'm. I'm, I'm sure that there are some systems that we could look into. We did uh have a system that was piloted a couple of years back that would work for one of our program areas, but not for the whole department. So it could just be that we need to find a tool to use.
Okay, but nothing currently exists for you?
No, nothing, yeah.
I, I, Scott and I were on the same line. I mean, there's an HHS in every county in America. And I'm assuming that there's some, there has to be some packaged PMS system. That have, is there a resource to look into and identify with parallel counties? What a, a commonly utilized service is where you could, you know, because all of the functions are analogous within county to county.
Yeah.
I would, I would just think, you know, in most industries, there, there is a PMS system that would be available without having you guys have to invent every little component of that wheel, which I'm sure is very labor and time-intensive.
Absolutely.
Uh, just go ahead.
Camille has been dropped into a pretty bad situation and she has risen very rapidly. So we need to give Camille some kudos and also give her a little bit of time. She's swimming upward, so I am very, very impressed with the progress that Camille has made so far. And uh, I do have a couple of questions I do want to ask you, Camille. And actually, I talked to Heather last Thursday at Deshues County. And she is very willing to communicate with you that some of the things that they have done. She's a very wonderful young gal. So I want to encourage you to also, and actually on that thing to, to reach out to her. She's very, very willing. And I should have probably taken you to Health Council with me in hindsight that I now realize, so you could have met. But anyway, I want to go back on your slide, the Kirk County Youth Summit. You probably weren't present for that. Do you know anything about that? How the participation was, what went on? I know you probably weren't here, but I just wondered.
I, um, I think that happened in September Youth Summit, um. I think we had sixteen to seventeen youth that attended in Kirk County.
Hmm.
And all the feedback received from the youth was great. Yeah.
Was it advertised in a high school? What, what age group was at the high school?
Yep, it was high school-aged youth and they had to apply to attend. And then it was um like nine to five event.
Okay.
Yeah.
And one of the things for you sitting here that we were trying to do was Camille and our juvenile director, we were going to try to go to the school board and try to enhance some of our programs and ask them what we could do. Unfortunately, if you know, if you read anything, our school board is in the midst of an upheaval. So obviously that has been put on a back burner, but that's one of the new community members that we're trying to reach out for. And then my other question is obviously the development of a department committee to promote. How is that working? Have you gotten very far with that? How's that work? I know you're working very hard on that. How's your progress with that?
It's been really great. Um, the group kind of developed, was developed after say May, built in May, and so they've been meeting every other week since May. And then they will come up with suggestions on items to improve um the workplace for everyone. Those items will be presented to our leadership. Our leadership will either suggest something else or approve the suggestion. Some of the things that we've done uh have included kudos during staff meetings, so setting a time aside for that recognition. Because that was a thing that many employees felt like they weren't getting enough of, um, or there could be more of. And then we have had a few like hot locks, events for like more conversational related to not work. So building some more like personal collaboration relationships between all of our different groups in our service areas.
Perfect, perfect. And then you have the door contest where they all decorated a door. So we're, we're doing baby steps. We're getting there. Camille's trying very, very hard.
Yep, we, we are currently in the process of doing another survey. So we did a first survey. We're doing another survey to assess if the things that we've kind of im- implemented have improved anything. Um, and staff are currently in the process of taking it, so it hasn't closed yet.
And I hope Megan has been, now that we have Megan, I'm hoping the two of you are working together.
Yes.
Yeah. Perfect, perfect. So yeah, Camille, like I say, she's been put into a di- difficult situation, so I think where she's swimming upward, hopefully we're not sinking here.
Yeah, I did want to respond to the performance management system, though, the question, the comment that you made. Um, we wouldn't have to make a system. I think if there was already a system in the county, um. We just, we, we don't have a system currently in the county, so we're trying to build some systems up that can support us. And that kind of goes back to the challenge that I pointed out of lack of HR systems, so we don't have that system in place.
Yeah, my only comment was, was that every county has faced this issue and, you know, I, I, I quickly realized in what I do that I'm not the best at any individual component, so I go find who does it and I copy it, you know? And I was just making that suggestion that somebody's faced what you have and I'm sure that it may be a cheaper resource to just explore. And that suggestion interacting with the Deshues person.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And maybe I need to just, the, the, I need to give the introduction. Like I say, Heather reached out to me again. And she's, I think you would find her very delightful.
Um, Heather Kaiser, I had a meeting with her on Friday, yes.
Perfect, perfect, okay, perfect, all right.
Any other questions?
So Camille, if you had to outline your top three priorities, what would they be?
I prepared for this because I, I saw Jamie ask it, oh. I think we, uh, I'm sure what the next few years are gonna look like. Um, we need to look for additional funding sources, so that's a big um item that are priority that we need to work towards. Um, the communications staffing position, that is something that would help our engagement with the community. Um, I don't know if you follow us on Facebook or Instagram, but are posting from a little sporadic. Um, and then we have staff members that are taking on the communication works when they're doing an additional three different programs. Um, and then hiring and retention, I think that's the next big item.
Ready for the next one?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm here again.
Yep.
Welcome back.
Wow.
Change your hat.
I have to salute you now.
I'm now my better. Uh, so veteran services falls under the Health and Human Services currently. Our budget, we have spent seventy-three percent of what we expected to receive. Not spent, we have rec- we have, sorry, we have received seventy percent, seventy-three percent of what we were intended to receive and then spent thirty-six percent of that. Our um, our team has been working hard. Um, they have seen four hundred and eight office visits for the first half of twenty twenty-five, so from January, July to December. And then they have filed two hundred and ninety claims. Four veterans' events have been attended. And then um, the current VSO was appointed as a co-chair to the State Veterans Legislative Committee. And then they've also been appointed to the State VSO Board. And they have been accredited as a VSO um through the ODVA and the VA, so they can file claims without having to go through the state. And that just happened um the last couple of months. Currently in the process, they'd like to assist the DA in forming a Veterans Division Court. Work with state legislators to provide more benefits to Oregon veterans. And then beginning before June thirtieth, they'd like to increase social media presence to promote young veteran populations utilizing services. So we have a lot of older um veterans that know about our services and utilize our services, but we are missing that younger population. Um, and we do have quite a few young veterans in Kirk County. Working on increasing outreach in the community, um, we have one VSO. They have a uh front desk individual that supports them, um, but in addition to seeing many clients, they are packed. Um, so we'd like to see an outreach in the community, um, but we do need additional support for that individual. And then they're working on hosting an event in Kirk County focusing on veteran benefits and available services. Planning for next fiscal year, um. The current VSO would like to do a job fair for veterans, looking for like opportunities. And then partner with local resources, create food and clothing being for veterans. I know we have received donations from veterans that have passed. Um, we actually have a full office that's full of clothing items and donations for veterans, um, so that when they come in, they can utilize those. And then continue to work with state legislator to improve quality of life for Oregon veterans. Some of the challenges um affecting core services that uh veterans offer. Uh, volume is becoming too much for one resource officer. I don't know if you've seen kind of what our claims filed in the past or the number of appointments, but it's either doubled or tripled the amount. Um, we need an additional VSO to, in order to ade- adequately serve the veterans of our community. Um, since January of twenty twenty-four, um, the current VSO has rebuilt our office from the ground up and has increased claim numbers um an average of two point five times compared to previous three years. Um, and it's just one individual. So the request is that we either have another VSO part-time or full-time to assist with appointments and claim filing. This position would increase the core services we are able to offer without needing to schedule appointments two weeks out or longer depending on that. That's all I have.
I just a quick question as it relates to staffing.
Yeah.
Um. I see that you're requesting potentially additional resources to assist with your VSO. What's not being done today with just having the one person on staff?
Um, events, um, our VSO isn't able to attend as many events. I know there's a request for him to attend um Band of Brothers, which is, takes up a good portion of the morning prime appointment hours. Um, when he's out, then our appointments get pushed out weeks, months, and I know he's expecting some time off um coming up. So it's more just kind of getting that appointment wait time down and then increasing how many appointments that we can see. Yeah.
What if any resources provided by the VA to this position?
Sorry, what are the?
What if any resources provided by the Veterans Administration to this position?
What is any resources?
What if any?
What if any, um.
I can help answer that one.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Oregon gives out dollars based on the veteran population for every county. So we receive about ninety-three, ninety-four thousand dollars from the state for this program. And then uh ORS requires the county at least match that amount. At the moment, Kirk County's support is a hundred and sixty-one thousand, so obviously more than half. Um, and, and we are obligated not to go less than the amount, so whatever Kirk County puts into it, we can't give less than that. So there is a pretty stable, you know, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for sure funding the current program. Does that answer your?
Yeah, exactly. I was just, I mean, all this goes to the veterans, so
Right.
what's the US government kicking in, I guess was kind of, it sounds like zero.
Like, there's no federal dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The questions?
Are there any grants available on this, on veterans at all?
I know the current VSO uh has been working on looking for other grants. Just capacity-wise, he doesn't have time to apply for and then instantly, yeah.
Is there any out there at all?
Yeah.
There is.
There are additional funding sources for sure.
So same final question. What are the top three priorities for this department?
We need um another VSO, either part-time or halftime. Um, I know there's been conversation about funding that position, um, but it's already kind of been on our radar. And then, um additional funding sources would be crucial to supporting that position and is also providing services to our veterans in this community. Um, I know we have veterans that come in and they maybe have like, um a phone where you have to pay for the minutes, so they, they'll only call, but only for a short amount of time or um, so having some type of grant that could help support that um be important. Or other things, um. Just around that population and the needs. Um, we have quite a few veterans that live up in Jupiter Canyon, so they're not able to drive out to us. Um, so we do go out to their homes, so. Yeah.
I think we've seen some great improvements since they combined with the Health Department and Veterans. I think that extra help and support is, is helping. You know, made this process a lot smoother, so I want to thank you. I know it's been more work for Health Department to take on these services and help, but it's, it's been a great asset.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I give all the credit to Katie, um, um. I have big shoes to fill and I'm not filling them, but Katie has done an excellent job with the amount of responsibility that she's had.
Thank you, Camille.
Yes, can move on. I'll cover, but I might need a little help, so you might go, I want to be closer to a microphone, so you can uh correct me. Good morning again, um, I'm gonna put my Community Development Director hat on. Well, presumably will be one of the, one of the final times, but um got a relatively quick presentation for all of you uh this morning. That first slide shows uh that we've received about forty-eight percent of our anticipated revenue and spent about thirty-eight percent. Um, as, as most of you have heard me discuss previously, uh, we are a fee-dependent department, so when permit activity slows down, we see our revenue decrease. Uh, based on these numbers, it looks like we did a pretty good job projecting for this fiscal year in terms of anticipated revenue, but we're still a little bit, little bit slow. And, and as the commissioners have heard us, uh, when we've done our monthly updates, um, we continue to see pretty slow permit activity across um all of the divisions within community development. A few projects that have been completed as planned, um, the Building Department has implemented Blue Beam software for digital plan review. Um, Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there was a statutory requirement that we at least provide um, digital plan reviews starting January first of this year. Um, so that was something we were required to do. Um, I know it's important to the county that we continue to receive paper plans for folks who want to submit paper plans, so we still offer the traditional submittal process. Uh. This is, this dates back to the end of last fiscal year, but we reviewed and updated the department fee schedules based on an internal review. Um, I think in the next three to five years, it makes a lot of sense for the department to hire an outside consultant to come in and assess our fees. Um, to make sure we are accurately charging um our customers on the planning side. You know, our fees have to be actual or average cost. Uh, I think a more thorough Uh, I think a more thorough review is warranted at some point to make sure we're recovering. Um, all of our costs, but also not overcharging the public for the services we're providing. Uh, but we have completed an internal review and I believe our fees are more accurate now than they were a couple of years ago. Uh, Randy has worked really hard on the building side to ensure that his building inspectors are all certified. And Randy, if you don't mind, do you mind just kind of explaining some of the work you've done to ensure and the certi- certification across all of your building team?
So with Oregon, for inward having an inspection program, you have to maintain all the licenses. Bottom are duplicated, like residential, you're gonna have your. You have to have maintained A level certifications in all those scopes in addition to. Larger, more complex buildings. So for us, the last seven years, it's been a little difficult when we took over because, you know, we had the data centers came and they had, you know, two to. Five million square foot of data center where we really had to ramp up uh, the number of inspectors we had. Back then, it was a little more difficult. We did a lot of cross-training, a lot of research engagement in the last seven years. We were recruiting and hiring folks with one to two certifications and a lot of overlap, so. A lot of stress on our existing A level guys to perform the daily duties in addition to train the residential guys, so. With that, having to have that many inspectors to cover, um. The other challenge was is a lot of what we had is inspectors are short statewide as a whole. And they were only offering the training to existing divisions, uh, existing jurisdictions and programs. They weren't opening them to the public, so the only other option to get certified was through Schmeckata, um, and that was a two-year program. Three or four guys out of Schmeckata. But the existing pool for the normal public has not been there. The division was hoping that the building codes divisions. And I was hoping to have those classes available to the public this year and due to the jurisdiction of demand, they're shut down again this year too. So that means the only people that can apply would be an existing inspectors to cross-trading. It's limiting our availability for new inspectors as our, I mean, I think we retired like eight guys out of the program already. So as we staffed up, we also had to be careful having too many folks, but then also try to look at, assess, you know, how many years do I got these guys for retiring? Right now, we're looking pretty good. Rich Evans just retired, just had another residential plans in camera, I'd like to. Shoots County. But as far as inspection staff certification, meeting our goals. Partly why our goals for us is every inspector has all residential certifications, minimum one, commercial. And that within the department, we have two A levels each scope, so like two electrical. Because that way for consistency, you know, they want to take vacations, we've got somebody there to cover and we've got somebody else. So at that point, you know, it's taken us seven years to get where we're at, but we are there.
Thank you, Randy. Hey, Randy's worked really hard since he's been the building official to to get to where we are today with our our staffing on the building side and. That sort of kind of, that certification level ensures kind of complete coverage, um, sure if Randy can hit his statutory requirements in terms of getting out. Rural inspections when somebody submits a a request for a for an inspection, so. So it's a significant step forward for the building department to be where we are today. Um, also completed his plan, so. Uh, through C O I C, the three counties, Jefferson, Deschutes and Creek County, applied for a grant to help find. Um, some septic work for individuals, uh, Creek County did receive some funding through that program, I think that the bulk of it. Went to Deschutes County, but it was successful for some of our residents here in Creek County, uh, our county sanitarian, I know worked. Mostly with C O I C in terms of uh, applying for that grant and ensuring we we receive some funds here in Creek County, so that was, that was a success and it underscores. The importance of, um. Supporting, um, grant efforts like that, a. You never know exactly what you're gonna get when you do a regional grant like that, um, obviously we have a large competitor in Deschutes County with Deschutes County, but. Uh, that that grant program, although we could certainly have used more funding through that program, it was successful for our county and did lead to some. Some repairs to some septic systems, uh, in helping keep our commu- community uh, healthy, so. Uh, moving on to currently in process, um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the Transportation System Plan is anticipated to be. Completed by the end of this fiscal year, um, that project has taken a little longer than anticipated, but we've also added the scope of work by. Asking the consultant to engage some of their engineers to take a a more detailed look at Juniper Canyon, um, and to identify. Potential uh, routes for uh, a secondary access uh, out there. Juniper Canyon Access has been a conversation for many years now, and I'm optimistic that with this T S P update, we will have a uh. A preferred solution identified and we will be able to take some proactive steps from there to get some design work done and move forward with construction. That obviously will be a multi-year effort, but it's an important, uh. Uh, issue for the county to address. It's something we hear from citizens on regularly, uh. And it'll be a significant addition to that part of the county, get that project done. Uh, but the T S P also includes looking at safety issues, um. Along Highway one twenty-six in the Pal Bute area and otherwise, uh, updating the Transportation System Plan and ensure. That if the county elects to proceed with system development charges at some point, that we are, uh, we have all the information. In that Transportation System Plan, uh, to move forward with S D Cs as a potential additional funding source. I think it was about a year ago, board approved the Community Development Strategic Plan. Since that time. Department has continued to review the strategic plan and implement, um, some of the goals and priorities identified in that plan. I want to thank Katrina for helping with that, uh, there's a number of, um, projects identified in there that will help. Improve the service we provide the public, uh, and hopefully, uh, create a good working environment for the folks. The Planning Department is also working on a Department of Defense Grant. Anne Byer, the former Community Development Director, has been hired as a consultant on that project and she's. She's leading the charge on that. We have some work, a work session scheduled in a couple of weeks, Planning Commission, uh, it's public, the public hearing, I believe, coming up. February, so that project is moving forward. One of the things identified in the strategic plan is cross-training for our permit technicians. And that, that effort is underway and it's like, um, hopefully we have some. And I wrap that up by the end of this fiscal year. Louis Seals, our Code Enforcement Officer, has drafted a Code Enforcement Manual. This document will be something we can put on the the website to inform the public on what the code enforcement process looks like. I'm optimistic that with the new director in Community Development and Katrina's support, we can get that manual. Read it, ready for public assumption by the end of this fiscal year. Starting before June thirtieth, we just, uh, executed a contract with the same consultant that is, um, doing the Transportation System Plan. They are gonna work. Um, on a safety action plan. We received a grant from the federal government to complete a safety action plan. Uh, this is a prerequisite to a number of grants, uh, the jurisdiction looking for grant funding. And their funding sources to support safety improvements on the transportation system. Oftentimes require that a safety action plan be adopted by the local jurisdiction, so. This, this effort by uh, the consultant will result in ultimate adoption of a safety action plan. And hopefully will clear the way for the county to, uh, work with O D O, receive some grant funding to address. Particular some of the safety issues along one twenty-six, the Pal Bute area. Looking ahead to next year, um. This is kind of a recurring, um, topic that I've had on a couple of these slides in the past and it just has not. Um, has not come to fruition, but I, we have a comprehensive plan that is the guiding planning document for the county. It was adopted in the late seventies and except for the occasional, uh. Plan update related to an aggregate site or something relatively minor in that regard, uh. The comprehensive plan has not been reviewed to ensure that it continues to reflect the desires of the community, community, uh, from a planning perspective, so. What I, what I think would be an important first step is to analyze our comprehensive plan, identify, um, some clear. Shortfalls within that document, um, and also analyze the options the county has for pursuing. An update to the conference plan. That could come in a couple of different forms, uh, do a piecemeal, uh, seek to do the whole thing at one time, but. The, the, the project of updating the conference plan is gonna be a huge project and it's gonna take some. Uh, prelim- preliminary thought to get ready to do it, so that's what this bullet point is about, is just analyzing. Where, where, where are the weaknesses, what needs to be done and what are the best, um, options available to the county for pursuing? That and how can we fund it? So this isn't saying we need to update the conference of plan next year, but because it's such a big project, we need to put some. Thought into what that looks like for the county. And then there's an ongoing project that has lost some momentum, uh, but our land divisions ordinance Title seventeen. Is not particularly user friendly and is a little outdated. The Planning Department did start the process of reviewing. Title seventeen, in fact, we reviewed the entire thing. We're at a stage now, this is where momentum was lost, but we're at a stage now where we need to go through Title seventeen. Uh, we've identified where some of the cleanup needs to happen, but we need to start to work on some language and move forward with some work sessions, planning commission. Uh, but I think that would be a feasible project to get wrapped up next fiscal year. Some of the challenges impacting community development, um, all of our divisions within community development base. Consistent regulatory change from the state, uh. It's not just the Planning Department, Building Department has updates to codes. Different priorities in Salem result in different and changing, uh, regulatory requirements. And it is a challenge to stay on top of that, uh, you know, one of our goals is to make sure the public understands what the rules are. And they submit a building permit or they submit a land use application. And when the changes are constant, you can't stay on top of that in terms of updating our code, let alone trying to make sure staff is aware of all the changes. And that we're implementing those rules, um, as they become effective. Uh, so that's just, that's a constant challenge. Takes a lot of staff time to stay on top of, um, those changes. Uh, and you never know from year to year what's gonna come at you. Another challenge is uncertain funding. Again, as I mentioned earlier, fee dependent department. Really dependent on permit activity and when development slows down in our community, the funding likewise slows down. Uh, one of the things I think will be important for the next director to do, now that we have a couple of years worth of data in which we've seen that kind of that trend slowing down. I think it's gonna be important to look at that, um, and project out the next couple of years, assuming it's gonna be similar or the same. I think the jobs report from the end of last week and the kind of consensus that I was reading about over the weekend is we're not gonna see rates. Come down anytime soon, so, um, to the, to the extent that those higher rates are slowing development, I think. Uh, we can count on similar permit activity over the next year or two. Potential staffing requests, changes, uh. Building Department is currently down two full-time, uh, employees, uh, due to retirement and Staff Department Archer. And given permit activity, it's likely we're only gonna fill one of those positions, uh, at this time. Operations team is down one permit technician. It does not anticipate hiring a new employee to replace that position at this time. Again, with permit activity down, uh, there's not a clear need to fill that position, so we're gonna continue to assess and make sure. Um, we hire at the right time, so we're not unnecessarily spending funds on personnel. Planning onsite and code enforcement are fully staffed and no changes are anticipated next fiscal year. Happy to answer any questions.
I have one. Oh, sorry, did I catch you off?
Mine, mine is, mine is just really curiosity, uh, I was just wondering what the Department of Defense Grant ask is and what the utilization would be.
Yeah, so the Department of Defense Grant relates to, uh, military training, uh. Uh, their aircraft training routes, so the military already has training routes, mostly located in the eastern part of the county. Um, they're at different levels, so there's one that gets down as low as a hundred feet and others are around five hundred feet. One of the, one of the issues the Department of Defense has seen with the kind of proliferation of, uh. Alternative energy sources like wind and solar is potential conflict and when you have new pilots that are training. Um, if there's an unanticipated glare from a, from a solar field or there's, um, a windmill that pops up out of nowhere, that can be concerning, so. One of their goals is to ensure coordination between the county and the Department of Defense. The goal is not to limit development. Um, but just to ensure coordination as a part of the grant, um. Grant agreement, the county also is working on updating this Commercial Energy Code, which, uh. Has become a little bit outdated. There's been a lot of change to the land use laws around solar and wind development over the last ten years. Uh, there's also been case law that has impacted what some of the rules are, so. Through this, through the grant process, we're gonna update our Commercial Energy Code and Title eighteen as well.
So you stole my question? Mine was too, too prone, but I, you answered the question, because I didn't know if this actually. Would continue to generate income for the county, but it sounds like it's just a ground, grant to update our, our codes regulations. It's not anything, it's gonna be ongoing. We're generating additional income.
Yeah, no, I, uh, I don't anticipate any initial revenue. Hopefully we'll end up with a. Commercial Energy Code that is easier to use and may improve efficiency, if not for staff, at least for applicants, uh. But, yeah.
Yeah.
Not a revenue generator.
So Will, what are your top three priorities going forward?
You already left. Unlike Camille, I, I, I didn't prepare for that question despite sitting here, uh, hearing it asked multiple times, but I would say. Um, off the top of my head, I would say, um, we need to do. We need to, we need to analyze our revenue and make sure that we are squared away and on solid ground for the next three to five years. I think we, like I mentioned a minute ago. We have a, uh. We have a little bit of a track record with the last couple of years. I think we need to take a hard look at our reserve, make sure we are in a good spot to survive. Another two to three years with a similar, uh. Kind of economic situation that is, is slowing development activity. I think, well, Katrina, do you have anything you'd like to add in terms of priorities?
I would say probably one of the priorities, um, which we talked a little bit of, of the slide of this. Ongoing changes that are coming from the state is we'd like to get some community collaboration of just getting information out there. So of course we have the webpage and do our best, you know, like we're working on applications and talking to applicants, but getting out there on social media. And just kind of letting the public know what's happening with the department or within the state and what might affect them.
Hey, that's, that's an excellent one. I think communication is, uh, something we can improve on as a department and. Um, lots of opportunity out there to do, to do better. I would just add as a third one, just continued implementation of the strategic plan. I think a lot of the department's goals and priorities are. Spelled out well within that document, um, I think as a new director comes in, they should obviously assess, uh, what is in that strategic plan. Um, but I, I think continued implementation of that will continue to, um, put the department in a good spot, continue to serve. Provide its core services to the community, um. And, uh, otherwise, stay afloat financially while we work through, uh, this current kind of slowdown in permit. Stay afloat financially while we work through uh this current kind of slowdown in permanent.
You know, on the communication, a lot of people in this last court meeting. Didn't understand that there were applications for planning commission and stuff, and I don't know how we get that out there. Because we have a Facebook page. I don't know how we do it, but we are. And that's just a simple thing, let alone like if there's a code change or something. But we have to kind of re-figure that out, how we do that, because a lot of people don't read the newspaper anymore. Yeah, and I don't know what the mechanism is, but a lot of people commented on that. And I agree with you, Katrina.
Just a fourth priority that hopefully will be resolved quicker, uh, for my own personal sanity, but um. We need to, we need to get a, and Katrina's as well, but we need to get a, we need to hire a community development director, so. We have somebody dedicated to that position. Yeah, so this is the, that's a three, three B, I guess, or four. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to them.
Any other questions?
I like the next thing a break.
Yeah, we have a break next. So we're running, we're running slightly behind schedule, but um. Let's, uh, let's do a five-minute break. Does that sound reasonable? Five minutes, okay, we'll come back at nine seventeen.
You know, how does this finance received and they spent? You girls, you're in trouble.
We're in internal service. Ready?
Get up here, Christina. We're going to be tough on you.
Good morning, Budget Committee. Christina Heron, Creek County Finance Director. Uh, so we are an internal service department, so our revenue is based upon recovery of our costs. So we have received forty-four percent of that revenue and that we've spent about forty-seven percent of it. Which is consistent with about where we are in the years, about halfway. We will expect to have some significant increase in spending for the new ERP, which I'll go into later. But I think we might actually be able to absorb most of that cost.
Sorry, one caveat really quick. I didn't necessarily tell the internal service departments this. Their internal service revenue is not reflected in the percentage, because that is just something that we're doing for cost recovery. So. Percentages and the dollars shown are the revenues. Outside of internal service. So this is like a cafagran and some other things, so.
Just looking at that figure, so they don't look good.
Yeah, but, yeah, so the, the internal service revenue piece is covered. It's, it's at exactly fifty percent for all the internal service department.
You're fine. The projects that we've completed as planned so far this year are successful tax collection for fiscal year twenty-five. Um, expanding the ARPA funds as required by December thirty-first. Uh, transition of the airport operations to the county from the city. Completion of our safe audit, which is workers' comp and then procurement and purchasing training through GFOA that my staff and legal went through. Some other items that are in process are the ERP and payroll upgrades. That integrate with NeoGov, which is our new HRAS software. Uh, we're anticipating that to be a twenty-twenty-six. We should. And uh, we actually have gotten started on it and are really excited with the team we have with Central Square to put it together and they're been on the ball great so far. IT has a meeting with them tomorrow to go through the IT requirements for that uh upgrade and integration. We are currently still finishing up our fiscal year twenty-four audit and single audit as well as the matches statements and then have that done here in the next four or two. We are working through revamping our quarterly reports and implementation of some monthly and quarterly indicator reports for departments. We still do have our old ERP system, which like the health department said, has some challenges. Uh, it doesn't include encumbrances. So it's sometimes challenging to see where you actually are in the budget process or in the budget for the year. Uh, so working on redoing reports, helping people to just be able to see things a little bit better until we get this new ERP put together. And implemented. We've begun the fiscal year twenty-six budget process. Care for that. And then we're looking at calculations of proposals for some contract negotiations for the unions that we currently have. Um, we are in process with the IRS examination of our twenty-seventeen GEO bond. That's going well and I anticipate that being wrapped up here in the next weeks as well. So beginning before June thirtieth, we will start to update our policies and procedures concurrent with the ERP upgrade. Recognizing that almost everything that we do in finance is probably going to change. The ERP is going to create some tremendous workflow opportunities and efficiencies, so we want to make sure we're not stuck with the old. And that we're updating policies, procedures and our internal controls consistent and concurrent with that ERP upgrade. We'll also be going through as part of that, looking at individual departments on a department-to-department basis and kind of doing a needs assessment. To see where we are exceed, excelling or falling short and serving those departments and. Kind of matching that with how we can integrate that ERP to help them and then change what we're doing as finance department to better suit those needs. We'd like to put cash handling training together for all of our staff. Uh, by the treasurer and myself, we had talked to First Interstate. About putting that together for us. They had done it for us in the past and they're happy to do it again, so we're just working on some of the logistics for that. And then we're also going to begin looking at procurement, purchasing procedures and processes review kind of on the coattails of the GFOA training. That Jamie and Legal went into, since we really don't have a formal procurement or purchasing process in place at this point. Planning for next fiscal years probably seems a little bit light, um, but it will focus on upgrading the ERP. Those policies and procedures that are part of that process. Then challenges impacting our core services, really that implementation and upgrade is going to require a lot of procedural and internal control changes. And a lot of training across, across the organization. I don't know that it'll necessarily impact it other than it's, it could potentially change what it looks like it for the better is the hope, obviously. The potential staffing changes. Possibly reducing an FTE, which is our full-time cash receipts tech, um, to part-time extra help. This is not a layoff or anything. It's just by attrition. Uh. And then potentially in the future, adding a procurement or purchasing FTE. Just looking at what makes the most sense for the county. And after we have our ERP implemented. And we look at the efficiencies that'll be gained through that across our department, uh, we'll have a little bit better of an idea of what our staffing needs are going to be.
It's the part-time job that was the job that Adrian, Adrian, is it Adrian? Is that was her name?
With Allison.
Allison, if that was her job.
Correct.
So you would just replace that as a part-time.
Correct. Right now we do have extra help. Uh, Carol Brown, you may remember, you was in that position.
Came back.
She came back. She works two to three hours a day, uh, putting in our deposits for us right now to kind of fill that gap. Okay, perfect.
Lots of conversation around ERP. Has the ERP application been chosen as the platform?
It, it has. So we have Navoline from Central Square and we are upgrading to finance ERP, which is also from Central Square.
From the same provider?
Correct.
So it's just essentially an upgrade of your existing ERP platform?
It is. It's basically taking the dinosaur into today.
Gotcha.
Um, so it is cloud-based. And has a lot more bells and whistles. It has grant management software. It has encumbrances. It has investment management. It's got the full general ledger suite. It has our payroll, um, which will continue to process payroll and finance, but the HRAS side. resource management side will live in HR and NeoGov and the two programs talk back and forth. So currently we don't have a way to integrate that NeoGov HRAS into our old, our current ERP, because it is kind of a dinosaur. So uh, that'll allow some efficiencies. It's upgrading our fixed assets, which allows some more tracking. It has contract tracking. It's, it's a gigantic upgrade to what we currently have at a fairly low cost uh increase.
And is there an upgrade path since it's going to be cloud-based that we don't get so far behind that we have to do a full uh lift and replace like we are today?
Yes, so that was part of the issue with our current ERP is there was some upgrades and updates that were not done because they weren't required. And for example, a piece of Navoline is stuck, budgeting is stuck in twenty-twenty-one because it wasn't rolled forward and updates weren't done. That should be completely alleviated with the cloud-based software that we're going to. Um, another aspect of that is. Currently our data lives on our servers, physical ones, and this will remove that. It will live on Central Square servers. We do have a data. Recovery plan for it and IT is working with them to make sure we have all the redundancies we need to be able to back it up and restore it should.
Great strategy. Top three priorities?
I, I wrote them down. So. My top three priorities are. Streamlining processes, our policies and procedures, um, and enhancing internal controls while writing them down. Um, because we don't have a lot of them documented well, where I feel comfortable. Bringing on anybody in the department and saying, here's your procedure for a claim sheet. Uh, the procedures are great for us in our office. They're not necessarily great for other people trying to use them. So that, that's a goal and it's imperfect with the new ERP. An overarching goal across the county is to work on efficiently allocating resources across our departments and finding cost savings and efficiencies where we can. Uh, encouraging departments to look at areas where. They can find savings or more efficiencies and working through that with them. Those new reports will be part of that, kind of peeling back the curtain, helping people. Use reports as a tool rather than just something you look at once a month because I tell you, you have to look at it. Uh, and then implementing our new ERP and training the department heads and all the affected staff to be able to use it as a tool. It's just going to open up a lot of opportunities. The dashboard reporting in the new ERP is. Tremendous. Yeah, it's so cool. So departments can create custom dashboards to see what they want to see. It's got the grant management integrated into it. The budget is integrated into it. It's. Going to be huge. Um, but realizing that it is a giant change and it's a lot of stuff people haven't been used to using. And so I think training is a huge priority to make sure we're not letting all the efficiencies that we gain go by the wayside because we're not using it.
Job Christina.
Thank you.
The sheriff did tell me I was supposed to make it exciting and now it's about as exciting as I can think of.
I can tell you, I just got that finance, your Z drive thing, and I went through one of the departments and it is just very terrible to go through. So I can hardly wait till the new reports. It is. It's awful. Oh, I mean, it's just your, yeah, it's just, yeah, mind-blowing. Here you come, Eric.
Good afternoon, or what is it? Morning? Oh, my gosh.
I think there are a few of these though, so it might feel like.
Good morning, everyone. For those who don't know me, my name is Eric Lane. I'm the county's legal counsel. Um. Thank you for uh having the opportunity to present today. Um. The county council's office is also an internal service fee uh department. From time to time, we will get a negligible amount of external revenue from things like public records requests. Um, but those are uh quite small, so. Uh, virtually all, if not all of our departments, um, is covered through internal services fees. Uh, generally speaking, we have, other than personnel costs, two large expenditures, one of them. Either in July or August and the second in November. Um, those are to attend um annual conferences. Uh, at which the legal councils in our office um take continuing education courses and um talk shop with other county councils about. Uh, matters of uh shared interests. Um. We have, I am pleased to say, uh, got caught up on some of our uncompleted goals, so I think those have been crossed off our lists. Um, some of those have included undertaking staff trainings, trainings for the county personnel outside of our department. On public meetings and public records. Um, those topics are exactly as much fun as they sound like. Um, but I'm pleased to say that the staff took that in great stride. Um. Uh, and they paid a great deal of attention and for that I am quite grateful. We unfortunately, however, have a lot of different irons in the fire. Um, some of those include additional training such as public contracting. Um, there have been a number of different changes in the state law which have percolated down. Uh, to how the county needs to operate. Um, we are continuing our prosecution of the cannibal uh of the county's animal control ordinance. Um, unfortunately, those uh cases have not become. Suddenly more pleasant or easier to uh advance. Um, we are in the process of trying to update the county's ordinance on um camping or occupying public space. Uh, that again, um, has many traps for the unwary. Uh, we are in a situation where the uh state and federal legal landscape has. Uh, shifted and is shifting, and so the county is in a a position of trying to uh anticipate where the flow is going to go. Um, before it updates its ordinance. Uh, we're spending a great deal of our time addressing public meetings matters lately. Um. Not only for, say, the board of commissioners, but also for the volunteer boards that the county is interacting with. Our office conducts uh periodic file reviews of ongoing uh matters, uh contracts, policies, et cetera. Conferring with other departments and then undertaking um. Legal activities such as updating those contracts, closing files, um, or possibly pol- uh policy updates. It is one of my goals to update our county public records review process. Um, our current policy. Uh, was first adopted in two thousand seventeen um. After a round of legislative updates at the state level. Uh, it's still a good policy, but it's a little long in the tooth, and I would like to. See if we can find some time to update that. Um, and make sure that our current practice conforms to what our policy says we should be doing. Uh, going forward, we will probably need to devote additional staff time to dealing with the occupation of real property that the county has had foreclosure on for non-payment of taxes. Um, from time to time, um. The county is obligated by law to initiate foreclosure proceedings for real properties. If taxes have not been paid by a certain amount of time, three years. If the properties are not thereafter redeemed by someone legally authorized to redeem the properties for two years, then the county becomes the owner. And there are, from time to time, um, continuing occupations of those properties, even though they are now legally the responsibility of the county. Uh, when that happens, I mean, it's. Never a pleasant um obligation, um, but the county needs to figure out how we can either. Get that property back into. Private hands or um convince the occupant that perhaps they need to find an alternative place to live. Um, and as you've heard from some of the other presentations, the county is in go in involved in a number of um. Union bargaining matters. Um, the county currently has two unions and a third has just recently been formed, so that will be. Occupying a great deal of our time the next few months. Um, some of the other obligations that ideally we'd like to address uh going forward before the end of the fiscal year. Um, updating the county's code to reflect some changes to. Uh, nomenclature. So for instance, a lot of our code are, a lot of our policies still use the phrase county court, um, rather than, say, board of commissioners. Um, it would make sense that the county update those simply to reflect the uh new term. Um, and hopefully avoid any sort of confusion by members of the general public. Um, we will need to publish a request for proposals for what's called non-preference towing rotation services. Uh, this is for the sheriff's office. Um, when the sheriff's office needs a vehicle towed, um. What they uh like to do is have a number of different tow companies on call so that they can call these. Um, and in a rotation. Um, vehicle can be removed and the tow company can then uh seek its um recompense from the former owner of that pro- uh of that vehicle. Um, our current RFP is um. Quite old. It's been extended a number of times and it's probably makes sense that we need to update that, make sure that our um. Contract reflects any changes in the law that have developed since. The county also will be undertaking a request for proposals for the operations of a long-term lease for the um uh septic plant. Uh, the commissioners are all familiar with this. I the um. County had a long contract, long-term contract with a uh operator of a septic plant. Um, they ultimately decided they were going to retire. Um. And my colleague John and Jackie over at landfill uh burned the midnight oil over several months to find. An alternative septic plant operation system. Um, but that is by its nature temporary, and so we will be publishing a request for proposals for a longer-term operation. Um, and the goal is to get that up and running by uh June thirty. Um. Again, the commissioners are familiar with this, but uh from time to time, the county will receive. Uh, very, very large contracts. Two hundred, two hundred fifty, sometimes four hundred-page contracts from the state of Oregon. Or the uh community mental health program and the local public health um authority funding agreements. Um, those documents need to be reviewed. Uh, we do uh occasionally find issues that need to be resolved prior to execution. But those two uh agreements um are very long and they have a lot of zeros behind them. They are very important and we're anticipating getting updates to those this uh fiscal year. Um, and then finally I'll be working uh with the elected official compensation committee. Um, hoping to get a recommendation to the budget committee on elected officials. Um. Our our goal is to get that recommendation a little sooner than we got uh the budget committee. Uh, last year, and I'm optimistic we can make that happen. So for the next fiscal year, um, our employee handbook um also probably could stand. Um, a review and some possible revisions. Um, I am pleased to say I think our employee handbook is better than the employee handbook number of jurisdictions who are even larger, well, better healed than we are. Um, but uh that doesn't mean that we don't have some flaws that need to be streamlined, so hope to get that finished. Um. I would also like to see about spending some time updating our um identity theft prevention processes. This is something that I'm going to have to put my head together with HR and IT. Um, our current policies, again, I think are pretty good, but they might be a little old and we might need to polish them up. And in particular, see about finding ways we can um. Make sure that county staff members are familiar with how to avoid. Uh, participating inadvertently in an effort to steal the identities of public citizens. Um, and then uh going forward, additional staff trainings. Um, some ideas included nuisance abatements. Um, that is. Um, a subject that uh many public entities have had to contend with. Um, and perhaps public official ethics. Um, that is a landmine after landmine. Many traps really unwary, and I think there is. Um, perhaps some interest in providing some trainings to public officials here at the county as to. How to recognize problems before they arise. Uh, one issue that might come up, I spoke briefly with the district attorney about this. This is. Um, not even a plan. This is not speculation. This is a possibility. But there's a possibility that our department might become more involved in what are called civil pers- uh civil commitment proceedings. Currently, the district attorney's office handles those. Um, civil commitment is uh a subject without cheer. That is when. Um, public officials feel that an individual is an immediate danger to himself or others such that that person cannot be. Um. Left on their own recognizance. They need to be committed or temporary basis, simply to prevent them from hurting themselves or others. Um, I spoke with the district attorney and. Portion of those responsibilities or perhaps all of them um. Uh, may at some juncture be. A portion to our office. Uh, if that should happen, um, the unfortunate truth is those circumstances. Uh. Are very difficult to predict. And so they will be a sudden surprise. Um, and they will require an enormous amount of staff time to address. If that should come to happen, um, there'll probably be a great, be a great deal of discussion. Um, establishing parameters about who does what when. Um, but it is something that I thought I would mention as a possibility. Any questions for me?
Wouldn't you anticipate having resolution on that last topic you were just discussing?
Yes, excellent question. Um, I think I think your your question about when to have resolution is perhaps optimistic. Um, no earthly idea. It may never come to pass.
Okay.
Um, if it does, again, there will probably be a lot of conversations about um. The timing of it, the specific duties that are assigned, and at this juncture, I really couldn't say anything more than it's a possibility.
Okay. And then just one additional question for clarity on my own behalf. The um septic or sewage um challenge that you addressed. That's the program through the landfill. That's not our city. Program, correct? That's a whole separate entity.
Yes, although uh the city uh was a tremendous help in getting um the county in a position where it could transfer the operations from its former owner. The new owner, so they are involved. Um, we're grateful for their involvement, but no, that's a county activity.
Okay. And it's managed privately.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The top three priorities there?
Yes, um.
I know there's a long one with that question. I was giving a second.
So there is also a possibility that there's going to be a vacancy in our office, and we're a very small office. We only have three staff members. So uh, one possibility, should that come to pass, um, it would be a high priority to find someone. Um, who can fill some very, very big shoes. Um, if that also should come to pass, one thing that I would like to continue working on is cross-training staff members. Um, we have made enormous progress since the implementation of our new software program, Clio, uh file management software. Um, such that uh that has significantly reduced the amount of staff time that is required if, for instance, one of our uh colleagues is out sick. And the other person has to jump in to a particular project. Um, however, I'd like to see if we can advance that, not just to specific projects, but to broad topics. So as an example. Um, my colleague John knows a great deal more about bankruptcy law than I do. So if we get any matter that involves bankruptcy. Um, usually that falls to him since he's um. Uh, familiar with those topics and get up to speed faster. Um, conversely, if the matter comes up and it is a matter of, say, a complaint from BOLI regarding unfair. Uh, employment practices, that usually falls to me because I'm simply more familiar with that topic than my colleague. Um, so going forward, we'd like to invest staff time. And making sure that staff members are more cross-trained on broad subject matters. In the short run, that's going to be uh a bit inefficient because, of course, we're getting up to speed. In the mid to long term, that is going to, uh, I think dramatically increase the efficiency of our office. Um, and then uh for a third priority, um. I think that investing the staff uh time in staff trainings, whether that's for public contracting, whether that's for public ethics. Um. Uh, would be investment of time that would pay off again dividends. Um, it does lead to uh some. Uh, inefficiencies because providing those trainings, getting up to speed, preparing the documents, and then actually can. Conducting the trainings do require uh the investment of staff time. Not just for the trainers, but for the people. But once people are familiar with topics, of course, they will necessarily have things memorized. But they are at least uh aware of what they should be aware of. Um, and so uh that hopefully is going to, say, cut down on some of the um. Specific questions that come across our desks because people already be familiar with it or at least know the resources that they can. Um, investigate themselves to find the answers. Any more questions? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Very.
So on the job this time. My gosh. Good job, Jim.
Hey, next up is administration and board of commissioners. One of the commissioners wanted.
Jump in.
Lead the effort.
Our progress. You look good for it.
All right, I'll give it a shot. Um. First slide has has our numbers. As Jamie explained earlier, the internal service uh departments have received exactly. Half of the revenue. Um, as I understand it, that's sixty-four thousand dollars. It's just additional revenue beyond the internal service. Funds received. Um. Moving on to the next slide, completed as planned. Board has added accounting manager position. Uh, we have also. On the admin side, updated the compensation schedule that was adopted right at the end of last fiscal year. We have formed a compensation review committee to address issues. Um, both that were identified in that compensation study, but also to address um new positions as as they come forward or if there are changes to job descriptions. They have a committee now in place to review that. Hopefully that will ensure consistency and objectivity in the review process for those positions. Um. So that we can maintain equity throughout the whole organization when it comes to compensation. Uh, currently in progress or in process, uh. Working on a long and short-term facilities plan. To determine the best use of county's space. We have a number of departments. In older buildings, the last few weeks have been uh kind of underscored the need to have a plan in place. We've had a number of leaks. Uh, we now have space available in the courthouse with the circuit court moving out. It's just, it's time for us to put a plan together so we have kind of clear expectations, not only for next year. With the next twenty years, uh. So that we're taking advantage of the space the county has available and we're strategic in how we go about it. There are continued efforts to identify funding sources to support facility needs, including the courthouse. And the new county manager is continuing efforts to implement the new position to provide the best service to the public staff. Before county commission. Beginning before June thirtieth, um. County manager, he uh will, in parallel with budget preparation, work uh with departments that identify expected core services or service levels. If not already clearly. Fine. I'll come back to that momentarily. Uh, looking ahead to the next fiscal year. Current budget refers to a county-wide patient's plan and asset. Current budget refers to a county-wide patients plan and asset management program. Um, these should be carried over to the next fiscal year. Important projects we need to uh get off the ground with, get implemented. Uh, another issue that we all need to be aware of, uh with the new administration in the White House, um. We need to, again, in conjunction with this pla- uh budget planning process. Uh, begin to uh anticipate potential funding changes. We've heard one department this morning speak to potential increase in revenue with the new administration, there are other departments that may see a decrease. In revenue, and that is um something we need to be fully aware of. Uh, as we start to plan, not only for this next fiscal year, but subsequent fiscal years as well. Uh, challenging, challenges impacting core uh core services, uh funding. Yeah, felt like that was an obvious one I could throw out there, but that's always an issue, and and that's more a comment uh for the whole of the organization. Uh. I'll just go ahead and get right to the three priorities, since I know that question is coming. Uh, I have, I have two of them for you, um and they, they relate back to a couple of the slides that are in there, so. Um, as you've seen, we have a slide here that says challenges impacting core services. Um, I mentioned core services in, in one of the prior slides. I think it's really important as we move forward as an organization that we are very clear. Um, at the department level as to what our department's respective core services are. The budget document has a summary of the services provided by each department. Um, and in some cases, that may be a good description of the core services being provided. But I think it's really important as we go through this budget process and we move forward as an organization that we are. Clear in what those core services are. Um, one thing we don't have here for the commissioners and the budget committee members who are here today is the description of each department's. Core services, that's something I'm going to look forward to, working with each of the departments going forward. Make sure we have, make sure they align with the organization's goals, the board's goals and priorities. And this will help us uh. Formulate plans that are more strategic in nature and consistent with the organization's mission. Going forward, so that is one priority that I have for this year, another priority I have. For this year is uh continuing to uh implement the change in former government. And the implementation of the county manager role, this is uh. Still a new role for the county, and there's um a lot of learning for us as an organization to do. Make sure we are taking full advantage of that position. Um. To make sure the county manager is providing best service possible, both to the commissioners and to the department heads, but also the public as well. So that transition is ongoing, and it's a priority for me to make sure we continue to move in a smooth manner as we implement those change. I have two priorities, uh, sure I could come up with a third, fourth, and a fifth, but um I'll leave it there right now, any questions?
So as a general theme that I've heard from other departments in the county. Communications is a big outreach item that they're looking for to be able to interact with the community, right? So as the county manager. Could that potentially be a priority? To add as to, or to increase or improve our uh communication with the, with the community?
Absolutely, um. I think transparency is, is something that's on the forefront of a lot of folks' mind right now, as, as Eric mentioned during his presentation. He's been working on public meetings, public records matters. Um, but transparency for the whole of the organization is important. Commissioner Crawford has identified a potential opportunity that I look forward to working with him on. Deshues County does a county college program, brings people in from the community to see what each department does. I think that's an opportunity for us to get out in front of um some of the concern we may hear from the public from time to time. Let them know all of the great things our organization is working on. There's other things more communication focused as well, um better utilization of social media to keep folks informed. Uh. So, yeah. Short answer is yes, communication absolutely should be a priority, but I, I think it fits into a bigger kind of umbrella of transparency and in making sure the public's aware of. Uh, what's going on, and uh we do a lot of great things, and I want to make sure the public is aware of those things as well, so. Thank you, Scott, that's a, that's a good one. Thanks, Phil.
Question.
Good resources. Megan, you can come sit up here, I'll, I'll introduce Megan for the, those who haven't met her yet, Megan, the key is our new human resources director, she started last week. Um, I will not, uh, I will not put her on the spot and ask her to cover this, this presentation, uh but we're very excited to have her here at the county. So first slide, um it's like fifty-eight percent of the expected revenue has been received, Jamie, can you speak to what some of those?
So a lot of that is ARPA dollars that were intended to be used uh for compensation, we've used that for um some of the recruiting efforts. As well as ARPA dollars for the HRAS system, so those were things that were planned and we recognized that revenues match those, that spending, the capital. Spentiture on HRAS. As far as um year-to-date spending, you want me to cover that one also? So, you know, we're at thirty-three percent of the anticipated budget, a huge portion of that is not having hired Megan until now. Uh, so we are underspent on certain priorities for staffing, as well as just some programs that haven't gotten off, because we haven't had the staffing for it, so.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yeah.
So completed as planned, we have hired a new HR director. We have implemented a new compensation uh schedule. I mentioned that in the previous presentation. And we have acquired an HRIS system, uh we have uh a consultant helping with the implementation. We are getting close to rolling out the first. First module, the HRIS system will be a tremendous uh. Addition to our toolbox on the HR side. Through management, you know, give employees access. Their information, so it's, it's going to be. A great tool, uh once we get it rolled out, that will. Um, I may be skipping ahead a slide since that's an ongoing, ongoing project, but I'm excited to have that uh moving forward. Currently in process, I just mentioned the HRIS system, uh. More specifically, it'll help limit manual processes, uh consolidate practice systems. And as I mentioned, we improve our recruitment efforts. Beginning before June thirtieth, uh with the new HR director, uh we'll be able to put more effort into implementing the HR roadmap, which was previously adopted. We will. Also, again, restart our exit interview. Project or plan, uh. So that we're sure we're getting all the necessary feedback, folks, as they leave, leave this organization to go work somewhere else. So we're looking forward to get, getting that started again, planning for next fiscal year. Yeah, um. Now I'll call non-standardized job descriptions, it's, it leads to um. Just. An inconsistency across the organization by standardizing job descriptions, um. Hopefully we can um create, again, again, make sure we're, we're staying within the compensation. Study that was previously completed, we can make sure we're compensating folks equitably, uh but we, more importantly, we can uh. Have uh. Consistent job descriptions that will assist us with performance management going forward, so and that's a big project. And. We'll kick off, kick off next year, I know Megan's uh excited about that, um so. That'll be a, that'll be a significant improvement, helpful to this organization. Uh, challenges impacting core services, uh HR has been understaffed. For the whole, whole of the first uh half of this current fiscal year. We have a number of pressing needs that we need to address. So it's great that Megan is here, because we've got, got a lot of good work that we need to do uh on the HR. HR side of things. Uh. The, the current budget does include uh an unfilled HR uh position. With, with Megan starting here as HR director, uh this is a good opportunity for her to assess the need of that position. Uh, determine if you're going to fill that position, what, what services we need provided by that additional entry in human resources. So we'll continue to assess that as we go forward through this budget, budget process, but there, again, that is a position that's currently budgeted for. Uh. I think it's just important that before we fill, fill it, we, with Megan here, um, make sure we're filling. Uh, a position that will provide the necessary services for human resources. Any questions?
Just so I understand, the ARPA dollars that went to the HRAS, HRAS system, that's a one and done thing, yeah?
So like to give us the top three priorities?
I, I would love, I would love to attempt to do that, so first off, form and foremost, I, well, not necessarily first. But, uh, with investment in the HRIS system, we need to be um, need to be supportive of those efforts to get that implemented. Uh, we're, we're moving forward with that, um. You need to make sure that, you know, we've made this investment, we need to make sure that we are supportive of all the efforts to get it implemented across the organization, so. Uh, that. That is a priority for, especially for the next six months to a year, while we, we roll out the different modules, we need to support with that effort. Uh. We also need to be uh. As an organization, we need to be very supportive of our new HR director, uh we need to help uh Megan uh understand and the challenges that we have faced. Um, in recent times here as an organization, help her be successful in fulfilling her duties as HR director, so. Um, it's been, as, as I mentioned, we haven't had an HR director in. Six months plus, it's been a while, so it's um, there's a lot of work to do, and it, it's going to take the whole of the organization to be supportive. Uh, to get our, our human resources program back on solid footing. And to be the resource that our, that we can sap here, eat, uh and expect. Now, Megan, and you've had a whole week to assess, so if there's anything else you would like to add.
The HRIS system, I really want to make sure we're training, following up. Making sure that all the employees will have utilized what we're rolling out to them, because it makes uh no difference to them if they don't have it. I would like to implement myself going out, doing maybe lunch and learns, making sure that every employee um who has the phone. But people who do, who understand what, what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Were there any funding dollars along with that grant to purchase the system? Or is it just the system?
Um, so overall, ARPA dollars funded one point five million dollars.
I'm sorry, let me rephrase, were there any training dollars associated with that? Okay. Here's the car, we're not going to teach you how to drive.
Good question. Thank you, Megan.
Bing? James Crissom, the director of facilities. Get started. Um, budget received year-to-date fifty-four percent, spent year-to-date thirty-five percent. Everything.
So this particular internal service does include cost recovery, because uh facilities and a fund ended up itself, so a lot of those dollars. Um, are both ARPA dollars for the Justice Center operations that we were helping subsidize, as well as just the cost recovery from departments. And then the spending is a little bit behind year-to-date, because you have some big projects coming, uh you've had an unfilled position. And uh, we haven't necessarily seen those dollars spent yet, but they probably will be on track by the time June thirtieth rolls around.
Uncompleted, um enhanced landscaping around the jail, we upgraded landscaping around the jail, the library was neglected. We improved the sidewalks at search and rescue operations building. Did the move to the new justice center, which felt went seamlessly, so it's been good. Thanks to Brian's help, um replaced two-inch domestic water line at courthouse, feedback flow preventer. Sureing the proper additional uh functionality of the maintenance and backup generated search and rescue building that was working. Properly, um, currently in progress, evaluate current space requirements, got the county. Moves now that the new justice center is open. Um, provide training on equipment at the new justice center. Um, establish service vendors and contractors, support the ongoing operation and maintenance of all county buildings. Place generator, fuel tank, and health department. The. Ending for June thirtieth, crew to maintenance tech, which has been completed. Create maps for utility emergency shut-up valves across all facilities. Um, develop emergency, um. Oh. We need to develop emergency evacuation plans um and maps, establish maintenance work order system to monitor equipment lifespan. Finalize preventive maintenance and service for the justice center, finalize the, the building process for the installation of heating strips and gutter heat at the library. Clean up county-owned properties that do not meet client standards. Meaning for next year. Um, scheduled deferred maintenance projects based on prioritized ten-year plan. Safety code compliance address AD eight, um compliance countywide. Using the need assessment reports, set priorities and develop design and costs for any needed building renovations. Upgrade, upgrade access control for all county buildings. New energy, um efficient lighting upgrade. Countywide. Assess facility conditions for all county-owned buildings. Develop a ten-year replacement schedule for lighting upgrades. Start training programs, facility techs. Hence the county safety programs and trainings to comply with OSHA standards. Finalize building process for a new generator, library. Challenges, just learning the new justice center. How this online, making sure we can keep that running and functioning properly. Potential staffing, um, like to hire supervisor, facility supervisor, help, so I can start working on other projects. Do they're really quick? Uh, any questions? Very efficient.
You've got a lot of challenges on your list, James.
So with your growing scope. With the additional buildings in, in town, is, is this one FTE that you're proposing for facility supervisor? Going to be able to bridge the gap to help you manage all the property?
Yeah, I think it's. Right now, main this group, we've been fighting fires, so it's important for us to build this program, main this program, stay out, out of it with cams. Um, so we're not fighting fires, we're in front of it. Um, so our resources are really thin right now, so, yeah. That answered your question.
Along that line, I mean, and, and the, the statement that you've got a lot on your plate, I mean, between now and June thirtieth. Is, that's a long list of beginnings. I mean, are you concerned, or could you identify any that you think are a risk, um whether it be the, the map creation or?
Yeah, I think some of them will take longer than that, um we can get a general one ready to go and get. It is established and then build on that, so the goal is. By the end of this thirty days, it's going to just have them in place at least. It's going to be a process, and things change along the way. Yeah.
So this may dovetail into that, so what are your top three priorities?
Um, I think, um, now that we have a state uh HR director on, working with the state, um get our safety programs up to speed. Think they're there to make a lot of the, I'm sure requirements, building the state committee team up, building, you know, like I said, the, the system. Onboarding off.
Building the state committee team up, building, you know, like I said, the, the system, onboarding, off, reporting programs. Think is important for us. Help to figure out, the second would be help to figure out what. We're looking at as far as per county moves and where we're going to house our people and what that looks like for the next. And years getting that place working with Will to do that. And, um. Third one would be getting in front of the PMS on the maintenance programs and setting up the, we have a good maintenance program, um, system in place. But we're not utilizing it the way we should. We don't do inventory, we don't do end to live, um, tracking on equipment. So that would be another one that. Like to get in place and make sure we're operating properly.
Do you currently have a software application to help you manage your, uh, PM process?
Yes, Luke, like I said, it's a, it's a really good program that can do a lot of things. We're just not utilizing for that. So getting. One of the things move forward and getting training, begin a supervisor on here that can help with that, get him trained on that system. So we can start utilizing.
The demands for the facilities has grown quite a lot the last three, four years. It's. County's invested in new correction facility at jail and has a hell of a maze. It's taken over some of the properties that were under lease at the airport from, uh, Port Service and VLM. Um, that's now also into the sheriff's control. And then the justice center and then just continuing maintenance of all the old facilities that we have. So. We have everything from new, uh, state of the art technology that, uh, wow, it's just totally amazing that you. See the temperature in every square inch of the, of a building and adjust it. And, um, then you have the old one that has an old boiler that just. Creeks and bangs and you get what you get. Um, so it tremendous, uh, scope of. And responsibility and, and a lot of the facilities are aging. And that's why we've gone to looking at the newer type to. Take care of it in our growth. So. Kudos to the facilities department for tremendous work that they have and it's out ahead of them.
And I echo Brian's comments. You could, we go from like you say, facilities to I get out of my chair and the chair rolls over to the corner. So there you go.
Yeah, which works, you adjust your desk right.
I just need a bumper put in the office, that's all.
Thank you. Tell us the information off that survey. This is, you just mostly ARPA. And spent forty percent year to date, a lot of our contracts sort of fall. Next quarter. Um, given fiscal year. Leave it as planned. So single sign on phase one, that is basically the foundation. Um, identity platform that allows outpost applications to build upon. So you sign into one application and then that. Identifies your account and builds a trust or link with a lot of your applications. So you have one placement. Science image of all these other applications. So you're not having a username, password over here for this application. HRIS and another one for finance ERP. It's just like signing one place and then you're good to go and you can go different places. Truly foundational software. Um, Zoom, we. Signed a new Zoom contract to, uh, try to bring most of the, the. Meetings under one, one application. There's still some team meetings happening, but like right now, we're using. So everybody now has a film license, zoom account that's managed in a single central area. And then also use this hot, this sign on for access. So why do you think zoom username, password? Produced IT strategy with roadmap, um, before last year. Did a, a cycling program. So we didn't have an official cycling methodology. Now we have a vendor that we do. Much more enhanced security for retired assets and hardware. So now we. Receive a certificate for anything with data and it's destroyed according to this standards. So that's good to have. That's what we needed actually. So. I think that one, uh, justice center infrastructure, that's phase one project that is bringing justice center online onto our network. Phase two, probably next year, timing moves around on that a little bit with the planning of, of moves and things. Is bringing our primary data center, which is in Beaver Street location and moving it to the justice center. That's. In flux right now, based on, uh, her finding out like the first thing, because we actually want to move. Potentially move our backup data centers over to Beaver Street. The last item is our MSP partner. So we implemented, uh, Bridge Tech, uh, managed, managed services provider. So we need all the help that's within the ticket. It goes to the organization called Bridge. Phone, rapture ticket and then the escalations of that. So that's been really helpful. We've met from the staff of two, two, you know, we've got. A thirty plus people on the phone, um, all mostly based in. Um, Oregon or Kansas, nobody, you're not calling out of, you know, the United States or anything. And we also have one dedicated. Person from Bridge Tech here that has a desk. Thanks Tim, and probably all seen him around, running around the counties. Oh, you did? Yes, so. Leading staffing. So we just had, uh. Upper, the acceptance for our IT manager role. It's been. Long grind getting that again. So happy to have that. Please play, start in February third, Monday. For module of HRIS is live. We are still, uh, entering additional data like we can store IT assets. In for HR modules, working through what, what people want to do, how we want to store these assets. For a module and then also, um, insights, which is really the first module that you'll see from a user standpoint, insights is the third duty module. Uh, that should be going live here in. And then we also have the roadmap through the year for all the additional modules for the HRIS. TRAAS is asked for every as a service. That's, um. And you asked me what my priorities will be, that will be right up there, um, in the top three. Our current PR provider has end of life, the solution. Money on it. So we are looking through vendors right now and. Reviewing contracts to sign up for. IT services catalog, uh, version one is posted up to SharePoint. So we took all of the software applications and services. Posted them up in what we call a services catalog on SharePoint. So every single application has, what is it, who uses it? You know, if you're looking for something that's searchable and you can find out like these are the core services offered by IT. And if it's not offered to your department. We're working on a process to where, okay, uh, maybe this is something that legally exists in another department. What does that look like and how we manage the licenses? How do we request that process? So. Happy to get that posted up there. And, and we did it, uh, we started out on an IT staff and spend diagnostics where we have a third party come in and look at our staff. Our spending, what it looks like compared to other municipalities in the state of Oregon and various, how we compare. On those lines, we can make sure that we're, um, not only looking from our standpoint, that a third party view. What's our, so what does our business analyst cost for us compared to somewhere else? What are the salaries for us? That was really valuable and we're continuing that. Beginning before June thirtieth, uh, network assessment. Hoping to get that done before June thirtieth. I think it'll begin before the thirtieth, but I don't know that. Um, cybersecurity assessment, we ask my top priorities, that's number one. Um, looking to get that scheduled here. I have a contract I'm reviewing right now. IT governance workshop will be another priority. Which is really your policy. Continuity, which is your services, your work really. Taking a high level look at IT and all your processes, your procedures, making sure that it all makes sense and. Having documents and policies in place that are, that you can follow along and make sure that they're managed to best practices. Christine has spoken on the finance ERP implementation. So that's, uh, happening. Public site updates. He needs to make some up sites to our website as far as ADA compliance. So some things in there and maybe they have, you know, floor blind going. Select it, it'll change the colors on the website to something that they can see, or maybe. It'll just the font size bigger or you know, there's a lot of different, um, functionality that we're. Public websites. Yeah, basically, the public sites. And phase two justice center infrastructure, that's data center migration I mentioned earlier. Moving our primary data center into the facility at the justice center. Uh, we do have an SRE, which is a software we use for GIS running in our data center. It's running on older Windows servers. We need to migrate it to newer Windows servers. That's just one of those things, like says, hey. We're just continuing support for sequel twenty twelve. As of this day, you gotta do not sequel twenty twenty two. Pretty standard things when you have. Software running on server center data center. An MDM is a mobile device management solution that we don't currently have, uh, something that we really need. To roll out hoping for next fiscal year. Um, what that is, it's, uh, management solution for your laptops, your phones. Makes it so if something gets stolen, we can lock that device, we can remotely wipe that device. Um, it allows us management over those applications. It's also very important from a cybersecurity perspective. So we can control. Um, make it so someone that has maybe some malware on their phone can access our services, that type of thing. We can control what. Operating system version, they have to be fully patched on their phone before they can get into our HRIS, things like that. So it makes it so. The laptops have to have up to, up to date virus scanning software, malware protection before you can access our services. So it's this. Management platform over the device that says, hey, you have to meet all these requirements before you can access our service. So that's an IT tool of overall management of the devices around county. Um, right now that is done pretty manually, though. It's definitely something that we need to do and allows this to function much more efficiently. Uh, and then data management overall, that's going to tie into the government. It's like where are you storing your files? Uh, what solution are you storing your files and are they on our local servers? Are they keeping on the cloud? Um, that's something when we get our IT manager, that's one of the things I'm going to have him really dive into. But he had, it's right now, it's like he can get SharePoint, he can run that, he can use Ignite, he can use the file server, but lots of files in a lot of different places. Looking at a solution to bring all those in place. And then digital workflow solutions or something we're looking at for IT overall. There's a lot of, like, manual forms. Those types of things in the county, a lot of paper processes. So overall, we're always looking to like, where can we digitize this? And not just digitize a paper process, but really coming up with a real digital solution, you know? Sometimes when you try to digitize a paper process, it doesn't make sense because it's a paper process. So one of the things that we usually do is we look to our vendors and say, hey, when are you coming out with like an E form for this rather than us trying to convert it? Physical document to a PDF, then, then you have to sign and you still have to route it like a paper document, doing it like, where can we? Work with our vendors to where, where that document ultimately ends up is where it starts out. Start there, you, you do the form and it's already there. You're not having. Not only for IT, but overall, um, throughout the county. Yeah, and, yeah, challenges always, uh, this ties into funding. So, uh, staffing and competitive compensation for the IT group. Um, I find and I've been recruiting for the IT manager or recruiting for a GIS role. It's real competitive market out. So getting the right people, which is one of the most important things, is getting the right person in the door. I want them to stay here. I want them to be, you know, feel fulfilled in their roles. So they're not just coming and then looking for a job six months later. So, uh, making sure that we are, as an organization, competitive and. And I have some updated roles for GIS, um, that I'm looking to bring for presentation. It's just an adjustment. On the headcount adjustment, but initially on proof, there was. One and a half for GIS. Four and a half for IT, I'm moving it to for IT to GIS and it's just a sh- just an adjustment of point five FTP. IT moving that point five FT, yeah, I guess, four and two rather than four point five. And that's just an adjustment from the roadmap that I'll be discussing. But it doesn't have a huge effect on, on touching at the.
Yes, I have one, yes. So, uh, you referenced having data center space here.
Yes.
Probably i- in two different locations. Primary and, and secondary, which, which makes sense, but, um, you know, with. We use AWS just as an example with Amazon Web Services with cloud based services. You, you also referenced. Your Windows infrastructure on your server platforms being outdated and, and needing to u- update your platforms by which you're running your applications on. Are we looking at? Potentially moving that into a hosted solution versus an on premise solution? In order to eliminate some of the challenges that we have today and also eliminate the space requirements needed for, you know, hosting. Our, our server environment.
Yeah, that comes down to. The application itself. So Esri, for example, which I mentioned with the GIS portion, doesn't offer a cloud solution. So we could look at spinning up a SQL server in AWS and Azure. We do use Azure right now. The challenge with that, um, and why it comes down to the individual applications, because with mapping, you need really fast. Database access. There's like probably four or five different databases that are running scripts to tie into each other. You've got. Your standard GIS database and then, um, like for example, the fire maps and those are updated on the fly for evacuation. That's, that's a script that runs and it runs, asks to run quickly. And so you have to have a lot of vocal access for that. So. You know, in that case, our solution will be, and we've talked to an issue about it. Run it in your data center. So we'll. But, you know, for the finance ERP, for example, that's still a server hosted solution, a Microsoft server hosted solution, but we are using the vendors. That has co-location services as well. So if the data center goes down here, there's a. A east coast location. So it really comes down to, um. The application itself and when we have things like migrations come up, the variables come up, that is question that brought. There's, can we move, and move it to the cloud? Doesn't make sense from a, you know, financial perspective, the subscriptions can speak up on you. But if you have, in our case, we have a cluster that's, um, can support multiple BBS. We have like fifty or sixty different virtual machines running on. Basically hardware that's like three or four clusters. It splits up all those CPU resources. So in some cases, it doesn't cost us more from a hardware perspective. Most of the time it doesn't. You're just looking at the way those licenses.
And you mentioned your three priorities, but would you like to restate?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, so IT governance workshop, uh, looking at definitely that. We've got a cybersecurity assessment, that's two. And then, uh, our DR solution, uh, real quick. So make sure we're there. That's why the network assessment, which I would probably put it for is probably going to move out and, you know.
Just curious why you chose Zoom over Teams, see legacy teams?
Yeah, yeah. So Zoom offers better functionality. Um, a lot of our Teams meetings, that's not just local to county. Uh, bandwidth issues. You will notice, um, like you can get a lot of people on the Teams all sometimes though. You will drop that. So Zoom works better, we find, or based on internet. Just seems to have a better protocol. Um, the other big reason is I can call our Zoom rep and get an answer. So I try to call my, just talked about, uh, Teams. Even if I call our vendor, part of the reason, we actually moved our three sixty five licenses to our MSP Bridge Tech. That we get companies of scale that, right? We're no longer saying, hey, we're two hundred users. We're now in a, a pool of fifty thousand.
That, that's kind of why I asked, and I knew you had the three sixty five.
Yes.
I was like, why would you buy for K? But that's very good answer.
Yeah, yeah, I can pick up the phone and get support. Welcome, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, team.
Thank you for this.
Why don't we just push through? I was gonna say, so are are we good, everybody good with that?
Just push through and let Sarah come in, alright?
He's the best and they can always help up you.
Want to hear from Sarah.
Morning, it's Viddy. Sarah, for having us here today, giving us the opportunity to present. I'm Sarah Beeler, Kirk County Library Director, and I'm glad to be here today. So we are pretty much right on target for year to date and amount of money spent. We did save money uh moving forward, we made some changes this uh coming year that will save us almost seventy thousand dollars. One of those was with our ebook vendor um just shoots in libraries of Eastern Oregon, buy from overdrive. And uh by switching over to libraries of Eastern Oregon, we received another four thousand ebooks and will save about thirty thousand dollars a year. The other thing we're doing moving forward is uh reducing the number of devices that we have, since most people are using their cell phones these days. And that should save between thirty and forty thousand dollars a year. So we're stoked about those changes. We already have ideas on how we'd like to spend that savings, uh but we'll see how it goes. Right now I am the outreach librarian and I spend about one week a month going to the rural communities. We have a really nice partnership with Neighbor Impact and we show up at the Juniper Canyon Baptist Church. When they have service up there on the third Monday of the month and also we join them at the Pal Bute store. And that is on the, I think it's the first Tuesday of the month. And then we have stops once a month at the others. Um we do need an outreach librarian to do that full time because it is one of those um areas where. You you get going on that and then the need just explodes because you can see, oh, I could go to this community event or this community event and you know. Right now there's just one of me, we have some uh some great talent at the library and I'm excited uh to use them moving forward. One of the great things that happened this last year was the opportunity to apply for an Environmental Protection Agency Community Change Grant. And this grant was for nineteen million nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, we asked for the whole shebang. And uh we'll either get it or not get it, or they'll ask us to resubmit um with changes or uh there's probably other options too. But um no matter what happens with that, we turned that in at the end of November and we expect since we turned it in on the last day, not here until the spring sometime. It was a great opportunity to just learn about that process. One of the things I heard this morning since I got here was the need for, people are kind of reacting from secondhand information about the grants that are out there. And I know that as the library, that might be an area that we could help the entire county by subscribing to some of those online grant opportunities and giving the rest of our departments access to that. I know I would like it in the this large grant I heard about from two people in the community, but I didn't hear about it directly from any online grant publication. So thank you for the opportunity to do that, I learned a lot. Uh some of the things that are, we're winding up is uh we finally have the information that we need, it's gonna show up at a work session, this meeting to is. Install two electric vehicle parking spaces. And uh we're hoping to move forward with that, there are grant opportunities out there which should fully fund this project. The second one we've been working on for several months is an ODOT grant for e-bikes and they're going. Well, this will also show up at a work session, but they're gonna give us funds for three e-bikes, the helmets, all the accessories, extra batteries. We cleaned out one of the three storage sheds and they will be kept in there. And the other thing that was in one of those storage sheds, our building is twenty five years old. Uh it was original library shelving and it was still brand new, so we added what we could. And uh to plan for the future, but since our building is twenty five years old and I know that the county's working on um. Assessing the needs ability, buildings moving forward. Our library board president asked me to mention that um. You know, the thirty year life expectancy of that building is coming up. And uh I still think of it as new, but uh that's the reality of it and we are getting some maintenance issues. So thanks to James for working on some of that stuff for us and his crew. Uh we are at a spot and I'll give a a short background. Uh three library employees work up Juniper Canyon and we sat down one morning and said, where would it be our dream branch? There's a ton of people up there, um just a couple of weeks ago on a frosty icy morning, a lady walked in and I don't name it. I don't know who she was and I don't think she knew who I was, but she said, you need a branch up there. And that's uh beginning to happen, another staff member from a different patron said the same thing. Uh so we looked around, picked our ideal location, called that owner and said, would you ever consider uh selling this? And he said, no, but he said, you know, there's a six hundred and twenty two acre Oregon Department of State land unleashed grazing land across from Hilltop. And I said, oh, okay, well, that was a huge chunk of land. Anyway, where we're at in that process is it's kind of in our ball game, they want to lease that land to the county. And what they're waiting for is a second cultural site analysis, which costs thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. And um because of some of the cost savings, I'm hoping we will be able to move forward with that. That was what we applied for the large EPA grant for, uh was to cover the entire process, project. And so there would be hiking, biking and horseback riding trails on the right hand side as you go up. And on the left side, the county already leases the gravel pit portion. But on the right side of Hilltop is where we would propose a building similar to the Juniper Canyon, I mean to the Pal Bute Community Center. And they were gracious enough to give us their building plan to use in this grant application because it's pretty uh similar to what we would envision there, so we appreciate them very much. Uh so that's what's going on there. A little bit more about what that building would look like, there would be, it's kind of a forty by sixty barn dominium with two wings. And on this side, there would be a resilience hub portion. Um it would have a kitchen pantry, emergency supplies for the community, there'd be a large uh community meeting space in the middle. And on the right hand side, in the other wing, it would be um. A library of things type of collection, it would be more than books, it would be items that people up there could use to um. Enhance their self sufficient living goals and aspirations, so things like. Freeze dryers and food dehydrators and hand tools, things like that. Along with a park. I'm really excited about that. That's why I am mentioning it. We have received um a a spreadsheet showing what that cost uh for a twenty year lease on that. Six hundred and twenty two acre parcel would be, the total cost for all twenty years is sixty seven thousand one hundred and seventy five dollars and ninety four cents. They, it's a two tiered chart with one for the cost for hiking, biking and horseback riding trials and another one for that portion that is the where we would put a building. And so we will see where we end up with that, but um. No, that's about as how much money that we anticipate saving from those changes this year as we move forward. We really do need a full time outreach librarian to provide services in those rural areas, I love going out on our two thousand and four bookmobile bus, it's very fun. Um but uh we need somebody that can devote full time to that at a minimum. And uh we get somewhere moving forward with the Juniper Canyon. Branch, uh I anticipate two full time employees. And they can be part time with benefits, but you really do need two people up there, both for security and safety reasons, but also for bully reasons, lunching, lunch hours and that sort of. Uh the last time President Trump was in office, there were efforts to eliminate um the Institute of Museum and Library Services Grants to states. So that means I called the state library and I said, what does exactly, what are you thinking might happen here? And they said, um if those funds are eliminated, uh they're gonna lose all of their positions except the one that is funded by the state of Oregon. Uh to provide ready to read funding, and so that may trickle down in several ways. But one of the ways is the grants that they provide to Oregon libraries. We'll see what happens. And then the other thing that we did this year was we hired a part time, very part time employee through Mid Oregon Personnel to help cover Saturday shifts. And so that is working out well. Any questions?
Just a quick clarification on your uh total costs for your Juniper Canyon project. That sixty seven thousand just represents your lease costs, correct, not the cost of your building, trails?
Now, if we um if we get anywhere with the grant, whether it's fully or partially funded, uh there is a three year window to complete those. Uh items that we are getting funded through our grant. If we don't, um if we move ahead with the lease, uh then it's a much slower, more relaxed process of uh taking those project areas. A step at a time and finding fund, funding for them. So it is just uh the Oregon Department of State lands costs for the entire twenty years.
What would you consider to be your top three priorities?
Well. I would like to uh go ahead with the second cultural site analysis, whether I do that uh find the funds this fiscal year or in July, where I will have some extra funds. It's to be determined. I'd like to go ahead uh with hiring a full time outreach librarian to get on into the rural areas. And uh I would like to secure grants uh to move forward with some of these projects that we've got going on.
So Sarah, when I go by the library, parking lot is always full. I don't know what you do in there, but the parking lot is always full. So what do you think from when you took on, what do you think is your, how do I say, your increase in population, I mean? There's, do you have any way to gauge that because it's just, like I say, always full, the streets full, across the streets full. How how has your readership increased, I guess?
Um I think it's more than readership, we have a lot of people using the ebooks, they don't even come to the library and they're still using library services. Um huge uh community meeting room need. And in fact, if we were to expand into that yard area, I would anticipate we need um more meeting space, more staff area and more storage, but. Honestly, we could fill that meeting room two or three times and think of all the lack of parking there would be then. It's free, it is a beacon of hope, I had one parent come in and tell me that they had celebrated their child's birthday, who was fourteen, every year in that broadening room at the library. And so it means a lot to the people that are here, I like to consider it a beacon of hope and opportunity and um encouragement.
Do we charge anything at all for those meeting spaces?
If they sell something, then they're charged twenty dollars an hour. And if they don't, then it's free.
So basically those meeting rooms are pretty much booked all the time?
Yeah, we have people coming in uh on the day, it's like uh. Reserving uh one of those forest service cabins during hunting season, we got people coming in on the day that they can make a reservation three months out. And so I just see that as a huge need and I love that, that we're a spot where the community gathers and they enjoy coming together there.
Anything else?
Thank you, Sarah.
Morning. Save the best for last, huh?
I'm the lucky one. You're right.
Telecopel Airport Manager. Uh so starting off here, you'll see on budget, um obviously you receive six percent and spent six percent, so we're retracting pretty, pretty well. Um I guess a note to that, um we have two fairly large projects and they haven't, that money has not been circulated and started, started. Yet, so in the next six months, we'll probably see a a significant change in those, uh not only just the numbers, but the percentage will be. Depending on how part of the project is and where we're uh reimbursed for grants, so that's gonna be uh back and forth going forward. Completed as planned, so as planned, we had two fairly large projects. Um number one is the runway reconstruction project, which we did start. You know, uh probably two years of work, just get, just to get it to this point and and kicked off and started. We started about two months ago, um the project. Is in process now, it's going to stop during the winter, the rest of the winter, um until asphalt plants open up in the spring and then we'll we'll. Hit it hard in the spring as weather permits. Um and then hopefully finish up by the first of July is the idea of that uh project. The second is getting the approval and through a bid process for an aircraft storage building project that we've been working on for a number of years also. So those have been in in the process for for a few years, both of those. So we've uh uh I guess completed as planned, we've been able to start to take those both those projects off. So currently in process uh process, as I said, the runway reconstruction pro- uh project um. Completion for July first. That project is funded by FAA and um the state, so we're looking at grants. Um so even though the physical construction project will be complete, there's ongoing processes and forms, reports that will go on for probably at least another six months. For a closeout for later on next year or early next year, twenty six. Uh same with the aircraft storage building, uh will just be, we're looking for approvals. Uh an award for those pro- for that project, uh hopefully early next month. And the completion for around the end of August. And again, uh state and FAA funded, so then we have quite a bit of process with closeouts on those. Planning for next fiscal year. So uh forecast additional revenue from rental hangar, so this is the project that I'm, I I just spoke about, which is the. Aircraft storage building, so that's gonna be a revenue generating building, so there's ten spots, so hopefully we will be working on getting those filled up. And and I guess processing what type of revenue, what those numbers are gonna mean to the airport for the for the future. Uh forecast hangar land leases moving into new format, um all our land leases, we have a little over fifty land leases at the airport. Uh we've changed the format, um creating a little bit more lease space for each hangar building. That only changes if the building is bought or sold, um we are in the process of of changing some of those and. Hopefully with the next five to ten years, we'll be able to. Change all those leases into the new format, which generates. Probably almost, almost double the amount of gener- of of revenue that we're generating now on the older leases. So again, planning for next fiscal year, review equipment upgrades such as snow plow truck and generator, so those are two items that I'm looking at. Uh trying to find uh possible grant opportunities or any opportunity to to fund those two. Purchases. Challenges impacting our services, um increased costs in goods, goods and services, obviously that affects everybody. For our projects, for everything that we do, um in the past few years, you know, prices have skyrocketed, so it makes it very difficult to find the funding. If you find the funding and be able to get to the project, the costs have changed by the time you get to the project, so hopefully things will sta- stabilize and we can uh keep things going. With those increased costs, obviously, maintenance and upgrades. With those increased costs, obviously, maintenance and upgrades becomes more, more difficult to be able to track that and. Get those done. Increased costs for users, so. One thing it's, I guess to mention, if, if fuel costs go up three dollars a gallon, that's gonna affect the use of the airport. Obviously, people aren't gonna be flying as much, so flying to different destinations. So obviously, increased costs are, are a big impact at the airport. Did I ask my three priorities?
Sure.
Okay. So I guess number one, which is. Reoccurring and continuing is pursuing revenue generating opportunities. The airports has struggled for many years. We're, we're now, we're treading water. We're doing well. And we have some really good opportunities to, to be in the, in the, in the positive coming up. And I wanna get that, I wanna continue that. So it would be definitely pursuing revenue generating opportunities. Two, to promote the airport for the continued growth. So right now, we've been growing pretty fast with new hangar buildings and new leases. We want that to continue, so it's getting the word out. The private parties, businesses, to whoever will listen is interested in coming to the Primeville Airport. And then obviously, and this is probably number one, is just maintain safe operations. That's a. You know, reviewing everything that we do every day. Looking at ways we can improve. We do have a safe facility, and we wanna continue that. That's all, yeah.
Question. There was, yeah, I read it in news, you know, a big recent federal grant that mostly went to Pendleton, but some of it went to Primeville. Is that what you're referring to in the snowplow? I know their money, they had thirty-five-year-old snowplows. I, it wasn't, obviously, it wasn't huge. It was a couple of million bucks though, wasn't it?
So the, the latest grant that was, that, that went public was one that we are actually using. For the aircraft storage building.
That's where.
And that was a. A grant that was a five-year grant. We got a certain amount for each five years. So it totaled seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars is what we'll totally receive.
Do you have any idea when I was reading?
So that was probably for the runway construction project.
Okay.
And that was a little over four million dollars.
And that's, so that doesn't, are you paying for the snowplow truck upgrades and those things?
How are we paying for that?
Yeah.
So most of our, our, our revenue, virtually all of our revenue is. From the land leases, the revenue for land leases. So obviously, we, we, last year, a year, a little over a year ago, we got a new company in that, that runs. The fuel service and does some other things for us. They rent a number of hangers for us, from us, so that's kind of stabilized the up and downs. So we just have one continuous revenue stream that's there, plus the continued growth in the leased. Area, the hangar area, we passed two years, one, two. Or we probably put in five, five new hangar buildings. So with those increased leases is the, is the main thing.
I heard you mention. Working back in the notes. On the land leases, leases will double revenue. I was wondering over what time period that is.
So. So I'm wondering, double, double the total revenue is, is quite the right thing. Each individual lease will, will pretty close to double in cost as it reverts to the new format. So the old lease, and most of these leases are twenty, thirty, forty years lease terms. A lot of them are really old, and they, and they were, you know. Fifty cents on the dollar in today's value. So number one, with these new leases, we're able to get those leases to market value, number one. And two, we're actually, actually taking a larger footprint. So rather than leasing the four corners of the building, leasing the four corners of the building plus impacted space. So between the market value and the additional land space. The revenue generated from each individual lease will double. So we have approximately fifty of them, so it takes time for those to rotate.
So it's, so that basically, it says, as those long-term leases come due. And so that doubling of lease revenue really will be totally, totally realized many years down.
There's a couple that, that I would say a percentage, I would say five percent. Would be over twenty years. Most of them, I believe, I, I. Could probably say that. Seventy, seventy-five percent of these will be turned over in the next ten years. So majority of them will be turned over in the next ten years. All right.
One last question. I heard you state that you're building ten new spots for storage. Do you feel that demand will fill those spots in the first year, two years, three years? What's your projection for filling those ten spots?
I, well, so costs have increased a lot. We've had a huge demand for, over the past three years of very. Storage spots. That has somewhat trended down in the last probably six months. But I believe that. Easily within the year, we'll have it full. I don't think we're gonna fill it within the first month. I think depending on what our price point for those storage units, definitely the first year.
And is ten the number you've come to because of space limitations?
Ten is because of cost of the project, number one. And two, that, it's a typical footprint for a multiple-unit storage facility.
Okay.
So it's just kind of typical, and it comes in line with what we're, we already have established. And this is the first one that we have, one, two, three, we have four of these type, actually five of these type buildings out there. They're all privately owned. So that, those private entities are, are getting the revenue for, for those. This is our first building. So once we have it established, that revenue comes directly to the airport. So it's pretty big, it's very big for us.
Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
That concludes our regularly scheduled program of presentations that we were going to do today. The rest of the departments as well are going to come in tomorrow morning.
So.
Same place, same time.
Yes.
Yes.
Anything else to add? Anything else?
Oh, I appreciate everybody's time. Hopefully, hopefully, you learned, learned something today. And we'll look forward to seeing you guys tomorrow.
Very helpful. Great, thank you.